Okay, good morning everyone. Time is 9:32. Welcome to Election Day. It's November 4th. We go ahead and call the meeting to order and I know Commissioner Henson is here. So if you want to do the roll call, please Erica.
Commissioner Malika.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter.
Yes.
Here.
Commissioner Baca.
Here.
Commissioner Henson.
Double here.
Double. What happened?
What happened to Steve?
We lost Steve. I would like to resubmit my proposal to LoJack Steve, I'm just gonna say.
I know. We don't have the budget for that.
We'll go ahead and get started and then he'll join us. He literally was right here. Okay, so with that, we have four commissioners present, five just not in the room. Let's go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you can please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we just need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm moved to approve the agenda as presented.
I will second.
Commissioner Malika. Oh, we're gonna have to do verbal votes today.
Oh, okay, thank you. Commissioner Malika.
Yes.
Commissioner Henson.
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter.
Yes.
Commissioner Baca.
Yes. So that motion passes forward to zero. Onto our next item. It's item number four, awards and presentation. So we start this morning off. Our first recognition this morning is one we always look forward to because it gives us the chance to celebrate an exceptional young person right here in our community. We'll begin today by recognizing the top student from the Adams County Education Consortium Eighth Grade Career Expo. And that was a really great time. We had eighth graders across Adams County come to our Riverdale Regional Park to learn about workforce development, what career paths that they want to take, and expose them to different employers, which was great. So from both this board and also from countless adults across Adams County, you often hear conversations about how important it is to invest in our youth and create opportunities for them to learn, grow, and succeed. So today, we get to see what that looks like in action by recognizing both a remarkable student and a program that helps open doors for students all across our county. This year's top student is Cameron Mealy of Thunder Vista Pre-K to 8th grade in Adams 12 Five-Star Schools. So let's give Cameron a round of applause for being recognized by local businesses. By local businesses and exhibitors at the Career Expo. So what's so special about this event is that it gives students a hands-on chance to explore the world of work and to build important life skills such as how to introduce themselves with confidence, ask meaningful questions, and carry themselves professionally. We're so proud of this program and the many community partners who make it possible, and we're thrilled to celebrate Cameron. So with that, we have Ms. Randina, the Executive Director of the Adams County Education Consortium, at the podium to share a few words and to introduce Cameron.
Thank you and happy Election Day. I woke up thinking a little bit about what it means for it to be Election Day and informed citizenship. And I think this event is in its 21st year, but at its base, even though the style of it has changed, the sentiment of creating a space for information and critically thinking and exposure to a whole bunch of diverse workforce options has remained. We had 5,741 students there this year, largest event in Colorado of its kind, 47 of your middle schools. And I always want to underscore this, that there's no other county doing something like this. You have seven-plus school districts all coming together with the belief that all county students are our students because there are future citizens, there are citizens in our future leadership. The one comment I wanted to say about Cameron that somebody had wrote in about him is that he has a unique ability to communicate, think critically, and see the world through interesting eyes. And that just felt like the perfect definition of informed citizenship. One of the focuses we've had this year and last year is highlighting student-led booths and career and technical education programs so that we see the diversity of options to students. Some will go to four-year colleges, but many will get certificate programs, apprenticeships, paid-on-the-job training. And this year, we had 57 student-led booths from all of our districts. I did want to commend Adams 12. Cameron is a student from Adams 12, Board President. Lori is here and Principal, and hopefully they can get in the picture at the end because they've really spearheaded for our organization, being our largest school district, but also the first to really focus on career and technical education programs. And what we found this year is that 80% of our students in 8th grade, after visiting those student-led booths, are considering enrolling in their first CTE course when they go to high school. Last year, that was 60%. So A, we're seeing a lot more interest in career and technical education. Two, our student-led booths are insanely amazing. Like, that is where all our students say are their best booths. They have near-peer mentors that they can see themselves in. We know that 8th grade is that pivotal moment where students either see themselves in their education or start to check out. So the more we can see for our students getting in front of diverse pathways and in front of students who look and act like them and are also getting engaged in their learning, the better off we'll be. So just so excited about how this program is growing. We are combining with the Adams County Workforce Center, which I'm so excited about for the apprenticeship fair February 26th. We're co-hosting it and co-sponsoring it this year to make that event bigger for our juniors and seniors. Should be 500. I will make sure you are all invited so that we can see those students who are looking at alternative career paths besides four-year college and have the opportunity to get in front of apprenticeship programs and paid-on-the-job training programs for their next year. So we'll be heading that way. So Cameron, we are just so proud of you. I did want to mention that Cameron is four of five kids. Three of them have been in the top in the past, but none of them have won. So he gets to hold this over them for the rest of their life, right? Yeah. Top exciting booth at the event for students by far was interest in public safety and communication. So those were very interesting. Lots of cool data points that have come up. One thing Cameron and I were talking about is a lot of students didn't see law at the event, and that came up as something that many students are interested and we need to develop more booths for. Cameron's considering potentially law and a run for public office in the future. So we have a lot going on there. Do you want to say a couple things?
Yeah. I thought it was an awesome experience just like coming here. I thought it was super fun and like I just got to explore many careers. I thought it was awesome how people like Ms. Griego and Ms. Roper got to experience or got me to the entire school to just go there and let me experience all that. So, yeah.
And Cameron said when he came in here, he goes, "Wow, I've seen a place like this on movies and TV, but I never knew I'd be here." And I just, this, I want to thank the commissioners because this means a ton to the community and it means a ton to the students to be recognized. And the reason they're recognized is booths submit their name that they were there to and they like communicated with them. They might have shaken their hand. They might have asked really important questions. And that's, we always want these events to be growth areas for our critical thinking and communicating skills as well. So thank you for continuation of supporting this event. And we just appreciate Cameron and all the students. The, my favorite quote of the day was the law enforcement from 27J came up to me and they said, "We were asked if we would be here to kind of supervise a little bit and we expected chaos based on the age of the students and we've never seen so much engagement." So that is the kind of compliment we want for these events. So thank you all for supporting us. And could we invite the family up to take the picture now or is that okay?
Let's, can we do a round of applause for Cameron, please? So before we invite the family, we want, definitely want a picture with the family. Lori Goldstein is here. Thank you so much, Lori. Saw you at the event as well. And the principal, thank you so much for being here. Let's go to Commissioner comments and then we'll come down and take a photo. Commissioner Henson.
Oh, right. You need, you have like a, you know, school and stuff. Yeah. That seems important.
I just want to say quickly, thank you. So congratulations, Cameron. Thanks for being here. Thank you for all the folks who supported you along the way. I'm very proud of what Alicia just talked about, that Adams County has the largest 8th grade expo. And thank you, Adams County Education Consortium, and all of our school districts for leaning in to provide this opportunity. My kids graduated from Adams 12, so this is giving me a lot of warm fuzzies this morning, but I know that all of our school districts are doing great things to support our students to find a career path and to find a future so that when they graduate from our school districts, they are just heading out into the world with an idea of what they want to explore. Where they land may not be where they start, but the fact that they're getting some confidence and CPAs laid before them is really important. And I'm just gonna say, Cameron, a local government is where it's at. So if you're thinking about running for office, we can talk. Actually, and I have had some conversations with our county manager, Dion Stroder, and some other people. I am very hopeful that we can maybe start a youth commission here in Adams County where we can really start having conversations with kids. There is, there is a, there are over 3,000 people who work for Adams County. So being in local government doesn't mean you have to sit up here, although if you want to run for office, I'd love to talk with you. You don't have to be up here. You can be doing all kinds of things. You can be working in the parks. You can be working in the office. You can be fixing computers. You can be balancing the books. Whatever, I just barely touched on a tiny bit of what we do in local government. So I'm really excited to hear that you have an interest in it and I'm very proud to work for a county that runs such a great expo for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pinter.
Yes, I just want to chime in, completely echo what Commissioner Henson has said. I'm just kind of curious about your experience at the Career Fair. If public safety and comms were the most popular booths, were they the most popular for you or what was your interest?
I don't know. Like, I feel like there were certain booths that like everybody went to immediately and certain booths like I would kind of completely ignore it because nobody like went to them. Like I saw like Air Force and like lots of like, I don't like, I feel like lots of like military stuff was definitely had a long line and like medical stuff. And unlike small things like film and arts have like no lines at all.
Okay, well, that's really interesting. Well, that, you know, that's nice to hear that there's something for everybody. I so love that you leaned in in such a way that you were nominated. I'm sure that required a lot of planning on your part to be thinking about thoughtful questions and how to engage and how you're thinking about your future. I'm sure you'll find something really amazing to do. And, you know, thank you for putting on this event that really broadens horizons and gives a lot of eighth graders. I have an eighth grader right now and I know that I heard all about it when they got home. So thank you for this event. It really is a hallmark in our community. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Malika.
All right, I'll be really brief. Congratulations, Cameron. I'm so excited for you and I think that there's just, you know, sky's the limit, buddy. Take it wherever you want to go. Also, thank you so much for our great educators who help support these students and help them grow and flourish. I'm an Adams 12 mom too, and I know we would be nothing without our teachers. So thank you all.
Okay, you know, I want to, congratulations, Cameron, first of all. I love that we're having an apprenticeship fair on February 26th. So please continue with that and thank you for your work as our administrator of this program. It's been fantastic. 5,000 students is a lot. And I want to thank the volunteers. I know President of the Board of Ed, Lori Goldstein was a volunteer as well. It's a lot of kids. It was a lot of energy, really a lot of fun to hear such promise in these kids and their curiosity of the world and different jobs. And so I was at the Colorado Air and Space Booth. We own and operate the Colorado Air and Space Port just for a few moments, a few rotations of kiddos that came through. And it was just really fantastic, the questions that were asked. So thank you to the educators for prepping your students on how to carry themselves, that poise and that curiosity and to ask that opening question. That's a lot for someone that's in 8th grade. And so thank you so much. So let's go down, bring the family. And District 12, you want to come down with us? We'll take a photo, then we'll go on to our next proclamations. let's go down, bring the family and District Twelve, you want to come down with us? We'll take a photo, then we'll go on to our next proclamations. Okay, our next recognition this morning is another special one. So we began this morning, as you walked in, we were honoring our veterans on staff here at Adams County. It's the first of what we hope will become an annual tradition to say thank you to our colleagues who have given so much for our nation. We'll continue that commemoration today by recognizing Veterans Day to thank and recognize those who have served our country with courage and sacrifice. In Adams County, we're fortunate to have a strong network of support for veterans across numerous services. And of course, our beautiful Veterans Memorial. We are committed every day to providing robust services and programs for our community's veterans and service members and also their families. So with that, will Commissioner Molika read the proclamation?
Yes. So this is a proclamation for Veterans Day for November eleventh, twenty-twenty-five. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who are currently serving or have served in the arms, armed forces have been vital in maintaining our freedoms and way of life. And whereas tens of millions of Americans have served in the armed forces for the United States during the past century. And whereas hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives while serving in the armed forces during the past century. And whereas our country is home to more than twenty-six thousand veterans and their families. Our county, sorry, is home to more than twenty-six thousand veterans and their families. And whereas our veterans are brave and selfless individuals who then who when duty called willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberty of others. And whereas their abiding patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideals on which the United States is founded can never fail to inspire us. And whereas our veterans understand the important task before the American servicemen and women now keeping watch. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Adams County, State of Colorado proclaims November eleventh, twenty-twenty-five as Veterans Day in Adams County and encourages all people in our county to acknowledge and honor the contributions of our veterans to the principles of democracy, individual freedom, and human rights.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm gonna invite uh County Manager Dion Stroder to the podium. Then we'll go to Commissioner comments, but those employees that have served or your family has served in uh our US military, you can please stand and be recognized at this time. Thank you so much for your service. Um, we'll get to Commissioner's comments, but first, uh County Manager Dion Stroder.
Good morning and thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak today. Uh, I want to thank everyone who showed up this morning at our reception for our first um reception honoring our employees who are veterans. You know, this is something that is very personal to me and one of the reasons I wanted to recognize our employees who are veterans is because I believe so deeply in the ethic of service, of service to our country. And now those same employees who serve our country are serving our county. And I think that should be acknowledged and celebrated. Uh, I am from a military family. I was born in a military hospital. Grandparents, two uncles and a current nephew are um serving, serving the military or currently serving. And I'm married to a veteran who served in Afghanistan in Operation Enduring Freedom and retired for twenty years of service to the Air Force. And it means a lot to me that we honor and respect our, our veterans. Um, I also wanted to thank everyone who has been participating in our new Adams County Serves Initiative. Uh, it's something that we started this year. Last week, we had our first week of service for Adams County Serves. And I was really so impressed with how many employees participated in that. But not only um it's Service Week, but who've reached out to our office, to some of our, our staff to ask how they can help, how they can serve, looking for more opportunities and resources to serve. And I think it's just a spirit of service that we have in Adams County and we want to promote that and celebrate that. And so this um Veterans Day recognition is part of our Adams County Serves Initiative that we hope we are doing all year long. Uh, and so thank everyone for their service. I thank all of our employees who are veterans, all of our residents, community members who are veterans, and really appreciate the proclamation and the support for this event today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dion. Comments from Commissioners?
I feel like you're, yeah, you were staring at us, like, go, Kathy.
I will, yes, thank you. I want to say thank you to our staff and for, to our county manager. Uh, I, I think the idea for the reception may, I, I don't know where it started. I'm gonna say it was Dion, but I'm not sure. But I want to say thank you for everybody who attended and for staff who put it together because it is very important that we continue to um acknowledge the service of, of everybody who has served in the forces, but also their families because military service and this is, I know this through friends and, and family, that it, it's a family commitment and it impacts um a lot of, a lot of members beyond the members who are technically enlisted in our armed services or serving in our forces. So I want to say thank you very much to everyone who attended this morning. Thanks to everyone in the county, all of our staff, and also just everyone of the members uh here in Adams County who have served. We're very grateful for your service and we look forward to um celebrating more Veterans Days with you in the future. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Kathy. Um, I, just to echo, um, as the, I come from a, you know, a long line of people who have served, my grandmother, my grandfather's on both sides, and my father um all served um in different branches in the military um at different times um in their careers and um it does have a lasting impact on your family. And I think one of the first examples I thought of of public service was my grandmother in uniform. Like, when I think of service, that's what I think of. And I know that um we all take it seriously and I'm really glad that we invest in our veteran community here in Adams County and uh support our Veteran Service Office. And they work really closely with our community, our employees, and the Veterans Hospital that's here also in Adams County and that we can always be working and learning uh to thank our service members for their work and provide them the ongoing care for which they're entitled um for their service. I think it's really important and I'm proud of that work we do.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have Commissioner Odoricio and uh Commissioner Molika next. And then I will also like to invite down Drew Dixon from our Adams County Veteran Services, Services Officer um to come to the podium and speak as well. So Commissioner Odoricio.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just want to uh kind of echo our extreme gratitude for the folks who put on uniforms. Um, I know that there's a lot of challenges and, and they do so uh both overseas and well as domestically. And I just want us to keep in mind that these are the folks who protect us and that put their lives on the line and they sacrifice and so do their families. And so uh as we enter a time where there's a lot of questions and a lot of challenges uh to policy, politics, and each, and, and how we utilize these um different institutions, I just want us to keep in mind that every single person that's out there that puts on that uniform is, is, are people who are just like us and we want to ex, express extreme gratitude and appreciation for all they and their families do for our benefit. And so um I, I just want us to keep that in mind because I do know that there's a lot of folks that are gonna try to pit a lot of us against each other. We can't let that happen. Okay? We are, we are, we are one team and we are one, one nation that's working together. And I just want you to know that, that there's not gonna be a moment where I think we need to allow um other forces to pit us against each other. We are extremely grateful for the folks who put on the uniform in the past, in the present, and to those families. So thank you all very, very much.
All right. Um, a, a lot has already been said. Uh, and so I, again, just wanted to thank especially those community members who are serving, our staff who are serving. I currently have a stepbrother who's deployed out in Italy. Um, and so it is sacrifice. It's sacrifice on the families at home. Um, but one of the things about honoring veterans and especially this proclamation in this holiday, um it, it's not just about reflection. It's also about responsibility. And once their service ends, that's when our service to them begins. And I know that that's the work that we're really focused on here in Adams County is what does that mean for access to housing and healthcare and education and job building? You know, that's the work that we as a county are doing to help support veterans that come home. And I'm really proud of that work and I'm really excited to see, um, you know, the, learning more about that program and, and the work that we've been doing here in Adams County since I've just been on this board. So I'm, I'm proud of that. Want to continue it and strengthen it because it, it really is twofold. Once thank you for your service, but also let us now serve you. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Um, Drew, if you'd like to come down and on your way down, I want to invite uh the public, all of our employees, our veterans here in Adams County, your families. Um, near and far, if you can join us this coming Friday over Veterans, uh the weekend, we're gonna have flowers, a flower lane at our memorial at the Riverdale Regional Park on Friday. So please come to that memorial. It is a moment of solace and of, of pride here in Adams County. Um, while we serve you and we recognize you for your sacrifice and your commitment to this country. Drew.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, everyone. My name is Drew Dixon and I am the Supervising Veteran Service Officer for Adams County. I assumed this role June of twenty-twenty-three. Before then, I was a VSO for Arapahoe County. The state of Colorado requires all supervising VSOs to be an honorably discharged veteran. I served in United States Navy as an aviation mechanic from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and seven. And I became a veteran of wartime aboard the USS Abraham Lincoln when deployed to Afghanistan and Iraq in support of the Seventh Fleet. To me, the label veteran is a badge of honor that I wear with pride along with several other ribbons and medals for military service. Now, as a Veteran Service Officer, I also get to help veterans and their dependents connect to their V eight benefits. And for this, I am eternally grateful to Adams County. Veterans Day is officially on November eleventh and is intended to honor all US Armed Forces for their service and sacrifice. Adams County will honor all events with a flower tribute at the Veterans Memorial in Riverdale Regional Park located off of Henderson and Brighton. Starting this Friday at zero eight hundred through the eleventh, all visitors to the memorial can grab a flower for free from the buckets provided and place that flower at the memorial wall. This is a great event and I hope to see you all there. I will be there, bright and early. Lots of coffee. So in conclusion, I will simply finish with this. When you see a veteran, thank a veteran regardless of the date. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you, Drew. And if you can stick around, we'll take, we have one more proclamation and then we'll take, come down and take a photo.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, our final proclamation of the day, we're honoring National Adoption Month. We are proud to celebrate the families who open their hearts and homes to children in need of stability and love. Here in Adams County, our adult, children, child, excuse me, our child, adult, and family services team works tirelessly to support these connections, helping kids find their forever homes and helping families thrive. Adoption truly changes lives for, changes lives and we're so grateful for the compassion, dedication, and hope this team brings to our community every single day. Now I'd like to have Commissioner Pinter, do you have a proclamation? Yes, read the proclamation into the record.
This is National Adoption Month, November twenty-twenty-five. Whereas every child deserves a safe, stable, and loving family where they can grow, heal, and thrive. And whereas each month, an average of twenty children experience abuse and neglect and come into the care of Adams County Human Services to wait loving, nurturing, and permanent homes. And whereas permanency, whether through reunification, guardianship, or adoption, provides children in foster care or kinship care with the stability and connection they need to reach their fullest potential. And whereas National Adoption Month is a special opportunity to both celebrate and raise awareness about adoption, honoring the children, youth, families, and child welfare professionals in Adams County who work tirelessly towards the goal of permanency. And whereas, as a result of the partnership between Adams County and the Seventeenth Judicial District, Adams County plans to finalize approximately sixty-seven adoptions in twenty-twenty-five. And whereas every adult aged twenty-one and older is encouraged to consider adoption. And it's important to recognize families of all backgrounds, including those who are single, have a disability, or have limited income, can provide a loving, permanent homes for children with various needs. And whereas, adoption is a lifelong process that requires dedication, support, and love. And today, we recognize the families who have opened their homes and hearts to the children and youth in need. And whereas, this day also reminds us many children and teens in Adams County continue to wait for permanent, loving families. And adoption might be the right path for individuals and families who are able to provide stability. And whereas, the success of adoption relies on the collaboration of caseworkers, court staff, foster parents, kinship caregivers, community partners who advocate for children every day. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado does hereby proclaim the month of November as National Adoption Month and recognizes the important work of the local courts of Adams County that will open their doors on National Adoption Day, Friday, November twenty-one, to realize, to finalize the adoptions of local children.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners. So now I'd like to invite Nicole Frank, Adoption Supervisor, up to the podium to speak. Thank you for being here, Nicole.
Good morning. My name is Nicole Frank and I am one of the two permanency adoption supervisors within Human Services. First of all, I'd like to thank you for taking the opportunity to celebrate with us in the celebration that this month brings each, each year. This year, the Adams County adoption teams are celebrating National Adoption Day on Friday, November twenty-first, from nine to twelve at the Adams County Courthouse. This year for the event, the adoption teams are set to finalize the adoptions for seven children into five families. For the year, the two adoptions teams anticipate to finalize a total of sixty-seven adoptions. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge, acknowledge this work by recognizing the Adams County adoption teams behind me. This group of individuals works tirelessly every day to make sure children and families have the, have what they need and are served in a way that's extraordinary. None of this could be possible without them and their hard work. Thank you, team, for showing up every day and giving your all every day. Each November during National Adoption Month, we celebrate families who have opened their hearts and homes through adoption. Oh, I'm sorry. It's also a time to raise awareness about the urgent need for adoptive families, especially for older youth, sibling groups, and children with complex needs who often wait the longest. Let us continue to commit to building a bright future where every child knows the love of a permanent family and their stories are honored and their futures are bright. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, I'd like to turn the floor over to my fellow Commissioners and Commissioners that would like to comment.
Sure, I'll, I'll just keep going first, I guess. Um, I guess I have a lot to say. Thank you so much, Nicole, and to your entire team for your work year-round. And I'm glad that we can take a pause today to acknowledge the significant impact your work has on so many families and children across Adams County. We're deeply appreciative of the time and effort it takes to uh care for the kids and the families going through this process until the families come together and have a great day to celebrate, which we look forward to on November the twenty-first. I, I think if we all just pause for a moment, we all know a family um where adoption has, is part of their story. And we see the, the impact it has and the joy and the, the great, there's just the great joy of growing families and finding family and creating family. Um, that is so impactful to our social fabric and the health and welfare of our county. So thank you very much for your work.
Okay, at this time, can the team please stand to be recognized and then we're gonna meet you out in front for a photo? It's our adoption team. Thank you so much for all the work that you do. We're gonna, if you could please join us right here in the front of the uh dais, we're gonna take a photo. Um, you know, I have to really recognize one of our former county commissioners, Tassadesco, that really spearheaded this work. Um, there was the center, you know, platform for him for many, many years. And so thank you for all that you do uh for our families here in Adams County. thank you for all that you do, uh, for our families here in Adams County. All right, we're at item number five, public comments. So Erica, do you have anyone sign up for public comment?
We do have three people signed up for general comment today.
Okay.
The first person is Becky Hoffman.
Good morning. If you could please state your name and address for the record or working address.
Good morning, Terrance Gordon, um, 13790 Screw Street in the city of Thornton. I am here, um, commissioners, to say thank you. Thank you on behalf of the Youth Resource and Assessment Center Board. Thank you so much. And not just for the financial support that helped us get off the ground, but for the message you sent by being one of the first and our biggest supporters from day one. For believing in our vision before it was fully formed, for your commitment when it was at, when we asked, for giving us credibility when we needed it most. In the very beginning, when our vision was just that, it was just a vision. The belief in the county board opened from the county board, I should say, gave others permission to believe in us as well. And there were, believe me, there were plenty of reasons why this effort could have failed. Plenty of reasons. Tight budgets, decisions about what to fund and what not to fund. The zero sum thinking that can exist in the nonprofit world at times. And the difficulty, uh, from the perspective of us trying to get this off the ground, of finding the perfect group of committed professionals who would show up at the board meetings, stay focused on the meeting, on the mission, and do the work to make this happen. Plenty of reasons that it could have failed. One of those reasons, however, was not a lack of support from Adams County. The county board, the health department, uh, the, the people who work in facilities, uh, the people in purchasing and procurement. Everybody stepped up. For those who don't know what I'm talking about in the audience, what we're, what we'll be opening is a nonprofit Ju-, Youth Assessment and Resource Center to help young people at risk or young people in crisis and their families get connected to resources and hopefully guide them toward safety and stability, mainly to stop them from being clients of the criminal justice system. I say this a lot and I'll say it again. When a kid has significant contact with the criminal justice system, it is highly correlated with bad outcomes later in life and they're very likely to become a repeat client of the criminal justice system. But today the wind is at our backs. We're meeting every milestone and looking forward to opening our doors in 20, in the spring of 2026. So what began as an idea has now become a movement in Adams County. And I've noticed, I've only lived in this county for five years, that when it comes to young people, we truly do put our money where our mouths are. That, that was obvious in young Cameron who was here today. These things mean something to kids. I mean, all of us in here were kids at one time and we probably forgot. But the support and the recognition from adults who care mean a heck of a lot to young people in their developing minds. I'm running out of time. There have been challenges and there will be more, but so far every time there was a challenge, somebody in Adams County stepped forward, whether it was government, uh, a service provider or a community member. Somebody stepped forward with a solution rather than a reason that it couldn't be done. So again, on behalf of the board, the young people and the families that will serve, thank you for being one of our first champions. Your support, the, the support of the link board, partnerships with the municipalities, service providers, provided the momentum to get us here. I'm a very confident person. I know four of you very well and you know I'm very confident. And I knew that eventually we would have gotten to this point. Fortunately, because of you, we didn't have to wait for eventually. We're here right now and for that, we are extremely grateful. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Erica?
Brian Ginnell.
My name's Brian Ginnell. I live at 6841 East 77th Place. I'm sorry I have to be in front of you again. Um, sorry, I'm not feeling real good right now. The, the dread won't stick in the middle of me. Once again, I was forced to go to Social Services last Wednesday to fix something they screwed up. I spent months fighting to renew the three programs I'm enrolled in and all three were approved eventually, meaning that I turned everything in needed. But then the state decided I needed to submit the information on my current vehicle again for a fourth time this year on a vehicle that I've only owned for 11 months. And so neither the registration or what it's worth has changed. If I had misplaced the phone number I got earlier this year before it was added to my phone, I wouldn't have needed to go. But it's a good measure that of how broken the county agency still is because of what I experienced yet again when I went there. It, I turned in that information in person yet again on October 13th and was given a receipt proving that I submitted it before the due date. But on Wednesday, three days before, three days after, I was in urgent care at National Health for Respiratory Problems. I received a letter informing me that I would go without health coverage starting November 1st on the claim that I hadn't done what I was supposed to do. When I got to the, uh, got, got to Social Services, the gentleman in front of me to talk to the check-in desk, desk, was submitting a renewal, he renewed for Medicaid and was informed that he would likely go without medical coverage for half a month because it would take nearly a month to process that, assuming of course he turned everything in that he needed to. Elderly and disabled people are so used to being dehumanized that this gentleman accepted that, that without challenge and left disheartened with the acceptance that in this county, that this county was going to leave him without the things he needed. From the first employee contact, I held firm to, I want to speak to a manager. The female employee at the front counter looked me up and responded, it confirms that we received it and is, is process pending. In other words, stalling technique. I insisted once again to speak to a manager and she gave me a number to speak to the agents in the numbered booths. When my number was called, I was told the agent, I told the agent that I wanted to speak to the manager, which she already knew because I was given an M number. She looked up my information and then said that she could make my case a priority, a tactic I've learned with experience. Yet again, another stalling technique. And despite a brief moment of feeling inclined not to rock the boat, I overcame the indoctrination of two decades of being dis- disabled and dehumanized as a result of my body getting broken and once again insisted on speaking to a manager. She was set back by my insistence and told me she would need to go find one and to have a seat and she would call me. She, she would call me back up. I didn't sit. I leaned back, leaned against a column, column for approximately 15 minutes of her wandering around, disappearing to the back and coming back up front alone. And then printing out my paperwork until she called me back up to declare, you're lucky because the supervisor just happened to be working on your case when you arrived. I'm calling BS on that comment. By the time I had been in the buil- building for close to half an hour after standing in line and checking in at the front counter, it only to, it takes about five minutes to take the records that are in the county system and send it to the state system. The technician had more than two weeks, over 40 work hours before I walked into that building and never found the five minutes to do the job that they are paid to do. But I'm supposed to believe that it was just luck that the supervisor looked at, into my case and spent five minutes needed to fix it. What she is actually saying is, I hope you're stupid and because the supervisor fixed this, you won't expose the fact that things are still not getting fixed here. This is what discrimination looks like. As long.
Brian, we have a staff member here. Um, we can have a staff member talk to you specifically about your case today. We have our, uh, executive leadership team here with us. Um, also the director of the Human Services Department is here in the audience.
He, he had given me the phone number, his phone number earlier this year and I didn't get transferred into my phone.
Okay.
Uh, before, um, I, I had more to say, but I looked at the agenda this morning. There are three proclamations on your agenda to give more than four and a half million dollars to a golf course that should be somewhat self-sufficient off of green fees and stuff like that. We are in a crisis right now. The federal government has shut down. People like me are not getting food stamps. The food bank is giving out nearly nothing. When I was there on last Wednesday, I got bread that had a due best buy date of October 14th. There's no, you know, before you start giving four and a, more than four and a half million dollars to a want, to something that isn't critical, that people aren't going to die if they don't go golfing, you should really consider helping out the people who are going to be starving this, this month. You should really be considering talking to South Adams County about suspending their liens and their disconnect notices and stuff like that for people that are in social services that aren't going to be able to pay their water bill because they're having to spend that money on food. You know, Adams County, South Adams County Water has asked to keep all of the table last year during the election. And for some reason, the voters voted to do that. And now they're asking for a rate increase. They need to give a little bit back to the people who need it the most. Cause I don't know, I've got less than $200 to live on for the rest of the month. I don't know if I'm going to be able to pay my water bill before I get a disconnect notice. So I would ask you to turn down those proclamations to support the golf course until you fix the needs of this community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Erica, do you have anyone signed up, else signed up for public comment?
That was everyone for general comment. The rest of the list is here for today's land use case.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there anyone in the audience for general comment that would like to come to the podium at this time to, to speak? Anyone else in the audience want to come down and speak under public comment? Okay, not seeing any. Um, we're going to go on to elected official communication. I'll go ahead and start us off this morning. So, um, I will be attending an important event. I have a funeral this morning, um, and we'll need to leave public caring. We'll see how the timing goes on this. Um, the vice chair will also be out unavailable. So the board will need to appoint an acting chair in our absence. It's possible we can get through our agenda today without this, but just in case, um, we need to step out to, uh, other commitments, I'm asking for nominations for a commissioner to ask as, act as chair in the absence of the chair and the vice chair today.
Uh, Chair, I would like to nominate Commissioner Emma Pinter to serve as chair in the absence of the chair and vice chair today.
Second.
Thanks, guys. Commissioner Henson.
Kathy, that's you.
Oh, um, yes.
Commissioner Obracio. Commissioner Malika.
Yes.
Commissioner Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much, Board. So we're on to, um, elected official communication. Anything from the board that you'd like to communicate this morning? Commissioner Pinter, then Henson.
Yeah, I know it was mentioned briefly, but I just would like to formally invite everyone to come join us on Friday at the, uh, Veterans Memorial. It really is a beautiful and solemn ceremony. Um, and that continues throughout the weekend with the ability to lay flowers at your own time or to join us at 8:00 AM on Friday um, for more of a communal activity. Uh, but it has been beautiful over the years where folks come and lay flowers on their own schedule with their own family members or in memorial of family members. Kathy, Commissioner Hudson and I were able to attend last year and it really was beautiful. And then it's a solemn reminder um, of what veterans contribute, um, to our community, um, those who are still with us and active in community and those who gave it all in the land of service. So both are recognized and we want to thank all of our veterans. So thank you and come join us, uh, for, um, that honoring and remembrance on Friday morning. Also, I can't let the day go without being like, it's election day. If you haven't voted, today's your day. Same day registration, no excuses. If you lost your ballot, you left it home, just walked down the hall. They will void your previous ballot, print you a new one and you can vote today. So if you haven't voted yet, I'm looking at all of you. No one's going to raise their hand, but like, if you haven't voted yet, go, go vote. It's election day. It's important.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Henson?
Thank you. Yes, I look forward to the event on Friday morning. And yes, happy election day. It is election day. Please exercise your right to vote. Um, we try to make it as easy as possible here in Colorado and going down the hall from here is the, is about as easy as it gets. It's, we are in such a, every day, I'm so grateful to be an Adams County Commissioner. And every day is sort of a mixed bag right now of, of wonderful celebrations of our youth and helping them find their way forward in the world and honoring our veterans. And then hearing, uh, the very real impacts of the, uh, cuts to SNAP benefits that are impacting a large number of people in our community. So I'm going to look to my colleagues who are on the cross-sector calls that the county's been convening, but if you are in need of food assistance, So I'm gonna look to my colleagues who are on the cross-sector calls that the county's been convening, but if you are in need of food assistance. The, as I said, the last couple of weeks, the county is open. You can contact our human services department. You can contact the county for a list of resources of where you can go. We, if you'd like to contribute, we are looking to some of our uh larger food banks, include, for example, uh Food Bank of the Rockies. Feeding Colorado, also the Village Exchange Center and who else am I forgetting? But you you can find, also find a list of resources where you can donate. The food banks that are larger have the infrastructure to actually push out the food to supply some of our smaller food banks to get. The resources that people are generously donating out to the people who are in need of support at this time while the SNAP benefits are, have been suspended. So that work continues. We work every day, uh, and sometimes the the ball gets temporarily dropped and some. We are human and and occasionally we will fall short, but our hearts and our minds are committed to supporting all of the residents of Adams County. So please do not hesitate to reach out to find out how we, and to let us know how we can best support you in this time. Look out for your friends and neighbors. Um. The government shutdown is over a month old. This is starting to have a larger impact on people throughout our community who maybe are not receiving. Uh paychecks and we're heading into the holiday season, always a time where uh those in need are on our mind and we wanna do our best to support them. And that includes all of us here in Adams County. We, and and we, we look forward to the holiday season. We also look forward beyond that. I was very happy to. Attend an open house um hosted by our Colorado Department of Transportation last week about bus rapid transit service. That is coming to the federal street corridor, um, all the way from South Adams, from the very southern border up to. Into Westminster, I believe. Uh, this is, it's going to take several years to get this infrastructure built, but it is going to bring bus rapid transit to our community. And an area that really needs a lot of uh mass transit support to connect people with jobs and shopping and food and healthcare and family. And so. There are always things to look forward to. Um, we balance the needs and the desires and the the few, the great things we have coming in the future with the. Intense needs of today and we're doing our very best. We work for you, so please reach out if we can help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners? I'll just add, um, if you're in a position to help a neighbor, a family, a friend, a food bank. Um, we do ask that you do that. They're really in need of money and if you have the time to also volunteer, um, if you would consider that as well. Uh, their purchasing power at at the food bank level is about one to five of what we can do as individuals of going out and buying retail food. They can go out and purchase um large volumes of food. The SNAP benefit is a real thing. Um, here in Adams County, I think I mentioned this at our last meeting. The SNAP benefit here in Adams County is thirteen million dollars a month that does not come into Adams, that will not come into Adams County. Um, looking at our neighbors and discussing with other county commissioners across the region. The total impact between Adams, Arapahoe and Jefferson County per month is thirty-three million dollars. So this is something that no government entity at the local level, your cities and your state county government can backfill. Um, we're grateful for the state of Colorado for their ten million dollar um emergency fund contribution to. Uh, answer to the SNAP challenge that we're having right now. Um, thirty-three million dollars a month over three metro counties is a huge number. That is a huge number that will impact our retail. Will impact our small business owners, will impact those that are not currently employed or not receiving a paycheck. So I just wanna um highlight that. It's been very difficult um to the gentleman's comments this morning. Um, sharing with, you don't do this work without emotion. You know, at the end of the day, one of my proudest. Titles that I hold is I'm a daughter and I'm a best friend. I'm an aunt, I'm a sister. Um, I'm a community member and when we heard that SNAP was not gonna be funded and we heard it about three weeks ago. Is that it was a body blow to me as a, as an elected official that you feel this as a person. Not as an elected official, as a person. And you do this work every day and you get up every day and you help. And we have Emma. Commissioner Pinter, Commissioner Malika on regional calls. They are running point for our food. Um, response here at Adams County that includes our city managers, our school districts. Our nonprofit community, our faith-based organizations of how can we support one another through this time? So. Um, we are facing really challenging times. We are in an election season uh today. Um, number of items that you can vote on at the local level, I will just mention on my final comments that. We really look at fifteen percent or less historically um of those that participate in a municipal election. So in a city election, my hometown of Brighton's about fifty thousand people. Um, about seventy-five hundred people are making decisions. They're electing leaders. Um, of the town of fifty thousand people, seventy-five hundred are engaging, electing those leaders. Forming policy, what does this business attraction look like where you live? What does, as the gentleman said, what do water rates look like? What do pro, what does programming look like to you? What is safety on your street sidewalks? curb and gutter. All of that is decided at your local level, your city level and your uh county level. So, just ending um with that, you know, one of the things. Government one-on-one in our civics class, many of you that remember that class. Is a lot of these dollars are passed through dollars. So when we look at SNAP benefits, it's a federal program. That is money passed through to Adams County, a program that we implement, not necessarily programmed dollars that we have. Your uh license plates, that is a state service. That's a. Service by the State of Colorado Department of Motor Vehicle. That is a service that is um. Deputized to the county level. So your challenge, you know, challenges that we see. At all levels of government, a lot of the times the county is there to implement these services for these service providers, including. The federal and the state government. So I would encourage all of you to participate in your election today, um upcoming elections. But the the challenge of funding not being available for our residents is real with forty percent being to children and about twelve percent. Being to senior citizens. So with that, we'll move on to, in our agenda, uh we are at item number six, the consent calendar.
Commissioners, if I may, we we need to remove item H from the consent calendar today. We have a clerical error that we need to resolve and bring that back to a future agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda. Taking off letter H.
I'll second.
Commissioner Malika?
Yes.
Commissioner Henson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Oderatio? Commissioner Baca?
Yes. Thank you, board. We're on to item number seven, new business county manager, Dion Schroeder.
Thank you, commissioners. Our first item of new business today is a resolution approving amendment one to the agreement between Adams County and FCI Constructors Incorporated. In the amount of two million nine hundred and one thousand dollars for the guaranteed maximum price for construction manager, general contractor services. For the Riverdale, Riverdale Golf Course Clubhouse renovation project. Cindy Stringham from Parks, Open Space and Cultural Arts will be presenting this item.
Good morning, commissioners. The golf cor- the Riverdale Golf Course is owned by Adams County. But it is funded by a golf course enterprise fund, which is comprised of all golf course fees and. Um, and revenue strictly from the golf course. The purpose, sorry. Oops, what did I click on? Sorry about that. Dot go? Or is it? Just, oh, I scroll. I am sorry about that. It's different. The purpose of this project is to enhance the Riverdale Golf Course Clubhouse to match the prestige of the golf courses. It will provide more efficient operations and customer experience. Upgraded furnish, finishes, furnishings and lighting, increase the outdoor patio and fix damaged piping in the crawl space. Pre-construction services was awarded to FCI Constructors in July of twenty twenty-five. To collaborate on final design and cost efficiencies and develop the guaranteed maximum price for the project. And funding is provided by the Golf Course Enterprise Fund. In the restaurant, the project will include enhancements to the bar and add built-in coolers and shelves. And the updates will include the lobby, the pro shop, the banquet hall and the restrooms. Here's some renderings. And the exterior improvements will expand the patio with more coverage and seating and add a fire pitch. The building permit is ready for issue to start immediately for construction to take place in the off-season for the golf course. It is recommended to award an amendment to the contract with FCI Constructors Inc. in the amount of two million nine hundred and one thousand dollars. For the guaranteed maximum price for the Riverdale Golf Course Clubhouse renovation project. Are there any questions?
Questions from the board. Commissioner Henson?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I I just, I get a little concerned over not to exceed uh contracts because. Generally, that's the number where you will land. Um, because it's, that's, that's the, that's the ceiling. It's, it's providing a ceiling, basically. So I, if you could uh just briefly outline the the bid process and how we arrived at this number and. And and again, yeah, like the competitive bid process to get us where we are today. Thank you.
Absolutely. With FCI Con- Constructors, um, we, they did actually go out to bid for real-time numbers. There is one portion, which happens to be the crawl space piping, which has an allowance in it. That's why it's a round number. Um, instead of an exact number. And that's because it is a confined space. It takes a lot of work and we're actually going to have to. Get somebody in there and actually define exactly which piping needs to be replaced. So it is a very, it's a conservative number for the crawl space piping. It could go down, but it will not go up. That is if we have to replace all of the piping. But otherwise, it is, they have gone out actually to bid to subcontractors. They're ready to award. Um, and have chosen the most valuable costs and um and the the best price. On all, all entity, all, all disciplines of the project.
Thank you. I guess my only other question would be why, why we don't have a more complete scope of work for the crawl space as part of this process?
It is, um, it is confined space and it has been leaking for a number of years. We've been working with facilities. Um, on that, so they've been a part of it. Um, it takes a lot to get down there and really, it's, it's completely deteriorated. Piping, um, exactly how much of it is gonna be needed that it feeds the um mechanical work. Um, the, and everything, so it's, it it's, it's a, just a lot of. It's hard to pinpoint exactly what's needed down there. We're hoping that it doesn't all need to be done. But it's just, it's a very confined space. They have to actually have certification to go down there. Is that answered?
Okay. Well, yes, but I still, that, yeah, I still have a. I'll just leave it there.
Can provide more information if you would like. I, I can follow up with a. Scope or the exact numbers for that space if you'd like?
Yeah, I think, I I think that would be, yeah, I would like that.
Okay.
Yes, I'd follow up with the, with those numbers. I'm just, I I guess, I I'm just curious about, I, I mean, this is maybe a co- a con, excuse me, conversation for a different time. Um, just about this. This contracting process and just not, not, without a defined scope of work, um, when it's property that we own. That why somebody couldn't get, I mean, it's not like we're, we're asking permission from somebody else. It's our own property as to why somebody hasn't gone down there. To understand what's, what's gonna be fully needed. Makes me loo-, that's, that's what gives me pause.
Okay. Commissioner Oderatio and then all the question for Commissioner Henson.
Well, uh, yeah, I was gonna ask the same thing. I mean, I mean, unless there's some sort of timely issue, if there's some more information that. That folks need, I I would rather have us feel comfortable with decisions than uncomfortable and have the. What appears to be a lack of comfort in a decision like this, so.
Thank you.
So I would be okay with pulling it. Is there some sort of timely issue that we have that has to get done today or?
It would just delay and if we weren't able to start right away, it could fall into going longer into the golf season.
Right.
When it's there. Um, the building permit is ready. We'd be ready to go immediately. The crawl space area would be, would not be happening immediately if we. Continue, I'd definitely be able to provide the information. It's, um. I believe, people have definitely been down there. Um, it's just, it's, it's old. The, the building is also forty years old.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I was trying to figure it out.
Can I ask a procedural question, either of Dion or the county attorney? Um, if approval happens today and we get a presentation, could, is there, is it open to amend at that point? I, would, cause what's, here's what's occurring on the calendars is that we don't meet next week because of Veterans Day and we won't meet again until the eighteenth, which puts us. About two weeks behind if we don't take action today. So.
Just to clarify your question, are you asking if this item is approved today, but we have a subsequent presentation? Are we able to amend the approval?
I, I think more information is needed, so I'm wondering if there's a compromise of. Taking action today, having a presentation, and then if there's any changes by the board. That they seem to need, I I think there's a, some information that is needed by the board to, to move forward with this decision, so.
I'm, I'm looking to the county attorney to clarify, but we also have Director Fanning available to help answer the question about how the. Crawl space um and piping was scoped and what the current estimate is, how, um, how it's come to be, if that would be helpful.
I, I was just gonna add that one, this has been assessed that it is in bad shape. The idea would be, we hope we could save some of the piping rather than have to replace all of it. But the idea is we weren't really gonna be able to fully understand that until we got down in there and started to kind of pull it out. So the price that we have listed here today would be the most it would cost. And the hope would be that we could actually end up reducing that price, um, if we're able to salvage some of the existing pipe, so. Um, it, we could send somebody down there and do further assessment. That's gonna cost money to send somebody down there to do that, so. We were trying to save the county as much money as we could by taking this approach. Everything else in the bid has been itemized out and uh contracted with subcontractors, so. We know every other dollar that it's cost and the contractor's not going to exceed that. It's just this one section of the project that we were just trying to save some money.
Did you want me to answer the question about amendment? Um, it would be my preference if, if we're not comfortable to not award the contract. I think it's possible to amend at a later date, but that would involve negotiation with the other side. Um, so I think if, if we really are not comfortable, I think from a legal standpoint, it's best to just wait.
Okay, thank you so much, Heidi. Uh, Commissioner Pinter?
So, um, here's my math. Like, I understand the proposal that you're putting forward. I, you know. You've heard us over the past several weeks go through budget conversations. We're very stressed about our budget. We're very stressed about the shortfalls. This has been a compounding problem of legislature and governor making repeated property tax cuts, um, which limit our ability to provide. General fund services on top of lack of federal pass. There's just a lot of budget. You are not coming forward with something that is unreasonable. We just are at a place where we have to have more scrutiny. And so that stress that you're seeing from us, the additional questions that you're seeing from us is like, what has to move forward? And so you've heard that from us the past several weeks, showing up today in public hearing. Is there some sort of compromise where we don't say a yes or a no, but you give us two weeks to ask some additional questions? And move this down the calendar a little bit so that we can ask a few more questions? And have some conversations about that cost benefit analysis of repairs now versus delayed repairs?
Absolutely. We're happy to do that.
Does that um cause us any additional, like how much additional cost, like the, uh, because the conversation I feel like was like this year or in the future? Versus like, can we have some two weeks to ask some additional questions?
Yeah, I, I think we can, two weeks should be fine. We're just concerned if we go too far out.
Costs.
Right.
Two weeks should be fine. Okay, well then, at that point, deferring to my colleagues, um, I'm hearing additional questions. Should, should we get out questions now? Um, and then allow staff to bring answers back, um, or chair or county manager, what do you recommend is our best path forward?
So if the recommendation is to wait two weeks, you can um vote to table decide for two weeks and we'll bring it back. Um, to new business at that time. In the meantime, we can have um more information provided to you pending your questions.
Great. Do you want the questions in this setting or do you want us to submit questions?
If you know the questions now, we would appreciate it.
If you know the questions now, we would appreciate if you could share those, otherwise we can, um, receive those from you later.
Okay. Um, I can hold a motion for two weeks or someone else can make it. Let's get through some additional questions because I'm, I'm hearing questions from my colleagues.
I don't know if I have a, a question per se. I was just offering the compromise, um, if the board's okay with two weeks. I know that there's, you're trying to accomplish this in the off-season. I just want to make a couple of statements, um, and we'll, of course, you have a first. I'll, I'll second your motion, um, then we'll go into discussion. So a couple of things, um, the funding for this, so you used enterprise funding, I'm just gonna break it down a little bit for the public that's watching, those that are in the audience, is that, um, this operates as a business. So the Golf Enterprise Fund is a business, so all the fees, all the revenue, restaurants, there's a golf pro shop out there, um, your tea times, all the alcohol sales goes into its own funding. So it's not taxpayer funding. The, the golf course is self-sufficient. So this funding, this $4.5 million-ish, um, is really coming from the golf course itself and no taxpayer dollars are utilized for this. So I appreciate the sensitivity of public comment earlier, but I think that that's a really clear clarification that needs to be had because we'll ultimately have questions when we leave here. The second thing is, is that, um, 2025, 2026 timeframe, we're gonna celebrate 100 years of golf here in Adams County. So Riverdale Regional Park, the Dunes and the Knolls, they're 60 years old and 40 years old. So I think that it's been, I was an employee because I did the golf course remodel when I worked here many years ago, like 20-ish. Um, and so it is needed and we're just so fortunate that our golf, these two golf courses, they operate in the, they operate in the positive, they operate in the black, um, and we just don't see that at the municipal level. So, um, I would like the board to engage in questions, send those to the County Manager and she can facilitate with our director and the project team, um, to really see this back in two weeks so we can vote on it and move forward. So those are the only things that I have. Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Odoricio.
So, uh, if, if Commissioner Pinter wants to add some of the detailed questions, if not, I'd be willing to make a motion to, uh, then I'm gonna support it. I think it makes sense. I think that your clarification, I appreciate of where the money comes from. I also appreciate the board's, you know, concern about the general underlying contracting, project management questions that are coming up. Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks to my colleagues for the conversation and for staff for their comments. And I, I think where I, I was getting caught up in what you were presenting is the cost benefit analysis of paying for a, a, a more comprehensive scope, uh, defined scope of what's in that crawl space versus what it would cost to fix it. And that's where I'm not sure that those numbers were balancing in my head. And so I would appreciate, uh, the clarification of a more defined scope of work down there, finding out how much new, new material, new, uh, pipes, whatever we're gonna have to purchase versus what we can use on hand. And I think, uh, and, and so I'd just like to know, I'd like, I think that we should know that going forward. Because, uh, to Commissioner Pinter's point, you know, as we've discussed, um, the bud, budget is first and foremost in our minds right now. We just are operating, um, in, in a somewhat new, newer way than we have in the past few years, I, it feels like to me. Um, that's the message I'm getting as a new commissioner, feeling a change there. So thank you very much.
Okay, we ready to vote?
All right. Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Henson?
Yes.
Commissioner Malika?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoricio?
And the motion passes five to zero. So, uh, County Manager Schroeder?
Yes. Item number two, um, also a project for the Golf Enterprise Fund, um, resolution approving Amendment One to the agreement between Adams County and ECI Site Management Incorporated in the amount of $1,525,938.59 for the guaranteed maximum price for construction manager contractor services for the Riverdale Golf Course retaining wall project. And Cindy has details on that as well if you'd like to vote on it today.
Yes. The current retaining wall lines the north side of the lake within Riverdale Regional Park and it's along Fairway 15 of the Riverdale Dunes Golf Course. It's 40 years old and deteriorating. It's creating unsafe conditions for the golfers. You see on the right side, those are the sinkholes. The project team consisting of the structural engineering company, the contractor and the golf course staff have been developing the plans to repair the sinkholes and replace the retaining wall with sheet pile, which is an interlocking steel, um, setup for new, for a new standard and longevity to protection of the lake, the park and the safety of the users. Pre-construction services was awarded to ECI Site Management in June of 2025 to collaborate on the final design and engineering and develop the guaranteed maximum price. The funding is provided by the Golf Course Enterprise Fund. The permits have been approved to start immediately and construction to take place in the off-season. It is recommended to award an amendment to the contract with ECI Site Management, Inc. in the amount of $1,525,938.59 for the guaranteed maximum price for the Riverdale Golf Course retaining wall. Are there any questions?
Questions from the board?
I, I have a question. Do we have the same kind of, I mean, why don't we put these together, bring them both back and then we can look at the details and, and figure out if we have some questions about that?
Detailed pricing.
Yes.
That we can provide.
Thank you. So I would make that motion to move this to two weeks under the same, um, conditions that we discussed on item number one.
Second.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes.
Commissioner Henson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Malika?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Item three, there's a resolution approving Amendment Four, Change Order Nine to the agreement between Adams County and Houdick Excavating, Incorporated, doing business as HEI Civil in the amount of $3,452,402.28 for the York Street Phase Two, Send the Eighth Avenue to 88th Avenue Project Amendment Four. Brian Staley, Director of Public Works, will be sharing this item.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for taking time on the, this, this item and the next, both of which are, are large change orders on ongoing projects. The York Street Phase Two project is on York Street, uh, between 78th Avenue and 88th Avenue. It's an ongoing construction project nearing completion. Um, and it has a storied history of environmental contamination and utility delays, uh, that led to today's change order request. The, uh, the history of change orders is documented here. Scroll down to Change Order Nine, which is the business before you today. Change Orders Five and Seven specifically address some of the contamination issues due to illegal dumping. Uh, a portion of today's Change Order Nine is wrapping up that work, but mostly addressing utility delays on the project. And staff, uh, we, we went deep on this in study session last week and, and discussed it at length, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the proposal in front of you. Uh, and I'll, I'll leave it there.
Great. Thank you so much, Brian. Commissioner Malika?
Yeah, so we received an email this morning as a board, um, about some concerns about change orders. Um, we have not had time to vet that email, to talk about the implications of this email. Um, and so I think it might be best to group item three and four, um, and hold off on those so that we could discuss what the implications of this potential new information regarding change orders will be before making a decision on them. That's a question up to the board, if you guys support that or what you want to do.
How about, um, Commissioner Malika, can I, can I make an ask? Like, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Um, I'd like some direction from County Attorney, County Manager, um, like, eh, I don't know, County Attorney, have you been copied on that? Yeah, can't recall if you were copied on the email. I haven't had a chance to really read through and consider it myself because we had such an early start this morning. What do you, what do you recommend?
I, I did see it this morning, um, while we were in public hearing. You know, I mean, I think that that issue will involve some back and forth and negotiations between Adams County and a utility that also had a cost-sharing arrangement regarding the project. And, um, you know, we just received that letter. Um, I believe others received it yesterday. I just saw it this morning, but, um, it's very new. So, you know, in terms of what the negotiations between the county and the utility will look like, that could be a, a process.
Would an executive session today be helpful or do we just, we really actually need more time to do research and then reconvene? And this could be another thing, we've been back in two weeks.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I honestly don't see it as a legal issue. It, it's gonna be more of a numbers discussion back and forth between the utility company and Adams County.
Okay. Thank you for letting me ask that question about if the next session today would be helpful. Um, Commissioner Malika, I don't know if that helps you or what?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it sounds like we need to, to get our numbers straight, so let's take the time to do that if possible.
And I, I will advise the board, uh, to lays on these change orders, which have been much delayed, uh, due to study session scheduling will have an impact on our contractors and, and potentially incur, uh, fees and additional costs on the project should we not move forward with executing the change orders.
I appreciate that information. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate that flag too. I think although it's a, it, as we, we know, you know, we had very robust conversations about these last week. This is something that Commissioners are trying to get our, uh, our heads around in terms of how these, the, how we got to these numbers, um, maybe seeing some documentation, uh, making sure that we're, it, it, would, it would be helpful for us to see, um, even in some more detail over the next two weeks on this and, uh, to make sure that we are feeling comfortable with, um, how we're proceeding with these because these are big numbers of taxpayer, big dollars, num, big dollars of taxpayer money that we're talking about. So I would support the, bringing this back in two weeks. Thank you.
So the question for staff. Oh, you go ahead. So on items three and four, will the proceed, the proceedings of this board will impact the contractor's payment, is that correct for three and four?
Yes.
So that would be, um, is it Houdick Excavating and Zach Dirt?
That's right.
Okay.
Two contractors respectively for York Street Phase Two and East Sixty, or 62nd Avenue Payco's to Washington.
Okay, so I'm gonna just make a comment and then it's up for discussion for the board. Um, and I think several Commissioners still want to comment as well. Um, last week's study session identified some challenges and I think that those challenges, um, may not be at the fault of the contractor. And so I see today's proceedings as two, two things. Um, we are under agreement with a contractor to go out and do this work and they have done the work and so we need to make them whole as a county. So I think for me, the procedures today is that we're looking at 3.5 million, almost $3.5 million for York Street Two, almost $5.5 million for Zach Dirt, which is Payco's to Washington Street. So I'm gonna make a case that the payment for the contractor go forward if the board is comfortable with the dollar amount of the change orders. What was this, what was, um, identified last week during our discussion is some operational procedural, um, also the, the board wanting to intervene, myself included, of what does, what does intervention look like from the board? Not, I don't think that's the right word. How can we help facilitate, um, primarily in at least one of these change orders, C. Dot to be more responsive to utilities? Also the utility company, in this case, Excel Energy, there's some, there's other utilities. I mean, you dig 12 inches in Colorado and you're gonna hit every utility known to man. Um, also here in Adams County, you're gonna might, might, might likely hit a landfill as well, which I think was the case here for one of these things. So if we're okay with the dollar amount, I would ask the board to move forward with the dollar amount that we make the contractor whole and we deal with the structural, operational challenges, um, policy challenges that are certainly up for this board's discussion and direction to give to staff. So that's where I land today, is that we move forward if we're okay with the dollar amounts to make the contractors whole. Commissioner Henson?
Thank you. I, I appreciate, I hear some frustration in your voice and I share, I, I'm not saying I'm not frustrated as well. In my mind though, paying these change orders is handsomely just approving them. And this is where we, and there seemed to be some questions from some contractors, subcontractors. There are more contractors impacted than just these two entities and we have multiple contracts, as was highlighted in the email we received. We're talking about multiple contracts with multiple entities. And so I do feel that it would be, I'm more comfortable with, with taking the two weeks to get some documentation and to get some information on what was brought forward to our, to our attention in this email. And nobody's happy about this. Nobody was happy when we found the landfill we didn't know was there and things like that. But I think that this is important work that a two-week pause, um, while I, I feel for, I understand the situation the contractors are in, I do feel that it's the best interest of the county.
Thank you. The, oh, excuse me.
I apologize.
So sorry. So the public knows and understands, this morning the board received, um, an email from North Washington Street and Sanit, Water and Sanitation District. Um, having not fully read this, but glancing at this, the project that they are referencing is not either one of the projects ahead of us this morning. So I-
But that doesn't change the fact that we have multiple contracts with different contractors for these projects.
I cannot offer clarification on that. For each project, we have one contract with a primary contractor. They have financial relationships with subcontractors. North Washington is a participant, uh, on the York Street Phase Two project as well as the 58th Avenue projects that preceded these two. And we have an IGA in place with them for work that they, they completed in conjunction with our project. I apologize, Commissioner Pinter, for jumping in there.
No, no, it's totally fine. Um, I actually appreciate, um, where Chair Baca's coming from. I generally agree with what you're saying. I just, um, we're always trying to balance. You heard the last conversation and you've been part of many weeks of budget conversations as well about how stressed we are about getting things right and cost overages and change orders. And at a time where, um, at the risk of sounding dramatic, 70,000 people have lost their food benefits this month. Forty-five percent of those people are children. We're really feeling stressed about every single priority, but also we are charged with good fiscal management and delays that would cost us money, um, delays that would potentially lose us relationships with, um, vendors. And we want to make people whole for services provided, um, on behalf of the county, but also the board is, I agree, also feeling a lot of stress about cost overages, delays and additional expenditures in every single category. And so that's the scrutiny you're hearing from us. Um, I can understand moving forward today and could support these today, um, to get us forward, but this conversation needs to be ongoing. County Manager's aware of it. She's been great about facilitating those further conversations. We, I feel like had a really good conversation about, um, what strategic steps do we need to be taking from here to not have these delays, to not have these change orders? Just trying to, uh, we're, you're watching us actively make a decision.
Yeah.
So thank you for participating and watching us actively make a decision.
And I invite the questions and, and welcome.
And that's where I'm at. Yeah. So all I can say is where I'm at right now and I defer to my colleagues.
Commissioner Odoricio?
I, uh, I don't, I, I do, with, with, with the clarification that this is still like one contract, I, the, the letter is concerning to me because it does mean that there's some, some questions about the process and the facts. And I do have some concerns because if it came up on a different project and we're having the same issues, it makes sense. It, it, unless you have some sort of quantification of exactly what we're talking about, I feel uncomfortable to proceed today because if something happens where there is a change and something in the letter says that, let's say the water district or someone else says that they don't have to pay a certain amount, then you might have to be coming back and asking for more of, of, of payments from us and then we're hitting this thing twice. I would think like for two weeks, um, for the same reasons we did with one and two, I think we just hold off on three and four, try to get some clarification on some of this information. And, and please don't interpret that as being like that we are trying to be bad to our-
Not at all.
Our contractors or that we don't care about the environment and things like that. Like, that, that would be a mistake to assume that that's the decision or rationale behind a short two-week delay. And so I beg of you to keep that in mind, that, that all I would support would be a two-week with more information, just like we're doing with one and two. And I think that'll help provide some comfort. We do have a situation where we keep coming back for more money on this project, whether it's parks or anything else, but it's all of it, facilities, like, it's how it is, it's the environment we're in. We're having a hard time explaining this to the, to the community and I think having enough information there will help us do a better job. So I, I would support a two-week delay on these two items.
So Commissioner Malika, um, raise your hand and then we'll take a motion on what the board desires.
I was just gonna offer a motion here, that's all. I move to, um, delay to pull item three and four, um, from the agenda today and, um, delay those conversations. From the agenda today and delay those conversations till we meet again in public hearing in two weeks.
I'll second.
So just some final thoughts. I'm not gonna support this measure. I think that Commissioner Pinter articulated the challenges. I've identified the challenges internally and those discussions will continue. The dollar amount for these, while unpalatable at some degree, was needed. A second landfill was discovered on one of these projects. We follow here at the county, all of the environmental laws, including all the attorneys and their fees and. How to dispose, how to remediate, how to go forward. Those projects are expensive. We had another contamination on York Street number one where a contractor actively, not the contractor that we contracted with. But another outside party actively dumped contaminated product on the land and that also had to be remediated. So today I am not gonna support this measure to delay. I think that we have identified with the administration. Our administration, Commissioner Pinter has articulated very clearly. Yes, we are sensitive to overruns and delays and changes. The work's been completed. The contractor needs to be made whole and that's what I'm voting on today. Thank you. Commissioner Hudson.
Thank you. I also just wanna articulate that this is not something that anybody relishes doing. But I do believe that two weeks. Time is needed to get even some more detail than we have, we have to this point. This is not game playing this to me at all. This is, this is serious dollar amounts needing, requiring a little bit more serious discussion. Than I feel comfortable that we have had to this point. I think that was clear in our conversations last week that we left some things a little bit unfinished. Before we, as we wrapped up those those conversations. And so this is in good faith, me moving forward with those conversations. To get the detail and clarity that we need to make this case to the public about these dollar amounts. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I have another comment. I I am just very concerned and I I appreciate and you're absolutely right, Commissioner Hudson. We talk a lot on this board about using sticks and carrots and I think. The contractor operated in good faith in this. While it is. Challenging that it was an overrun and it was additional funding and we are sensitive to that. We do have the money and we have negotiated in good faith with the contractor, at least on one of these change orders. I am very concerned if we use our policy hats to use a stick to punish a contractor. So that's where I'm at today. And Erica, if you can do the roll call vote.
Commissioner Malika? Yes. Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter? Commissioner Odoratio? Commissioner Baca?
No.
Thank you.
So the motion prevails to delay these projects for two weeks.
All right, Commissioners, item five is a resolution approving Amendment One to the agreement between Adams County. And World Connect Corporation in the amount of two million, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to provide aviation fuel Jet A and AvGas fuel services. To the Colorado Air and Spaceport. Director Jeff Kloska will be presenting this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Kloska, Director of Air and Spaceport. Here to present Amendment One to an agreement we have with World Connect Corporation. To provide aviation fuel, Jet A and AvGas under the lead fuel services to the Air and Spaceport. So as as you're all aware, we own and operate the FBO facility at the Colorado Air and Spaceport. And we are responsible for the fueling operations out there. We we just came to an end of our three-year agreement with World Fuel Connect. We have two one-year renewal options with them to continue using them as our our fuel provider. And this is essentially exercising our first one-year renewal. The amendment is for two million, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to purchase the two fuels. That we will sell at a thirty percent markup. So that amount, you know, our revenue will always exceed our expenditure amount for these items. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Questions from the board?
Just one quick thing. Can you just repeat that last sentence you said? So our revenue will exceed this expenditure?
Yeah, so so the anytime we buy the 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 Jet A or the AvGas, we will charge a thirty percent markup. As we pump it into the operational aircraft. So it's typically in the thirty percent range.
Okay, great. That's because and that's because of our infrastructure costs and.
Correct, correct, yeah. Our to maintain. Staffing, infrastructure, business, yeah. So our our revenue will always exceed the expenditure.
Thank you so much. If there's another discussion, I'll make a motion to approve this resolution to amend our contract between Adams County and the World Connect Corporation. For the amount of two thousand, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, two million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for aviation fuel. And this is Amendment Twenty Twenty Two Point Seven One Three.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Malika?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoratio?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, my final item is a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and C M T A Incorporated. In the amount of two million, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars for energy performance contracting services. Director Amir Fakir will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, representing the Department of Facilities and Fleet Management, my name is Amir Fakir. I'm joined today by our partners from C M T A and our planning, design, and construction team. Our team members and I'd also like to have a special shout out to our budget and finance team who's been very instrumental. In supporting this, advancing this initiative that we're gonna be bringing you today. We're excited to present a transformative project that not only modernizes our infrastructure, but also aligns with our long-term sustainability goals. The Energy Performance Contract, or commonly known as E P C, is a smart self-funding. Investment that will accomplish three key objectives. Reduce our overall energy usage for Adams County, reduce emissions. And save the county many millions of dollars over the next two decades. Those numbers will be specified by my team. I don't wanna steal their thunder on that, but they will be. Describing what those numbers look like. The initiative reflects a strong and collective collaborative. A collaboration between Adams County, the Colorado Energy Office we've worked with, and our private sector partner, C M T A. And demonstrates how cross-sector teamwork can drive innovation and deliver measurable community benefits. Today, we're seeking your approval to move Phase One forward of this E P C and we'll describe that what Phase One looks like. It represents the first step in a broader effort to make Adams County a leader in energy efficiency and environmental stewardship. So at this time, I'd like to introduce our partners here. Hayden is our project manager and John is our representative from C M T A.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today I'll be going over a short presentation highlighting the Energy Performance Contracting Project. An Energy Performance Contract, or E P C, is a contracting mechanism used to implement energy-efficient, sustainability-focused projects. That are funded by future utility savings from those projects. The purpose of doing an E P C is to reduce energy usage, emissions, and maintenance costs by replacing old mechanical and electrical equipment. Completing these projects will help the county work towards its twenty thirty sustainable Adams goals and help to meet Colorado building performance standards. Some additional benefits of using an E P C are guaranteed utility savings and the ability to complete many major maintenance and replacement planned projects and accelerated construction schedule. The S M team most recently presented the E P C project and proposed project options in study session on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. And received board approval to move forward with the project, project, projected project scope. The proposed project scope includes thirty-four individual projects across fourteen county buildings. Some highlights are two solar arrays, two geothermal systems, and L E D and H V A C upgrades at various county buildings. By completing these projects, the proposed. Savings would be a twenty-two percent reduction in energy usage and fifteen point six million dollars in total savings over twenty years. Today, we are going to seek board approval to move forward with Phase One of the E P C project. Phase One is an early release solar package to begin working on the installation of the solar arrays, take advantage of potential tax credits before they expire. As we presented the study session in June, we will be coming back to the to the board in late twenty twenty-five and late twenty twenty-six to request approval to move forward with Phases Two and Three of this project. I'll now be handing this over to John from C M T A to discuss some of the solar highlights.
Hi, good to see y'all again. Good morning. John Gooden, I'm a principal and project manager of C M T A. We are an engineering firm, a contracting firm that's been working with the county since our selection last year. To kind of develop this project, figure out competing goals, how we're gonna assemble these together and what is the best return on investment ultimately for the county long term. I live and work in Golden, Colorado, here in the state. We wanted to. Talk a little bit about our first phase of this project. We're planning on installing solar panels at both the Riverdale Animal Shelter and at the Human Service Center. Together, both of these projects are about one point two megawatts worth of solar panels. I heard a lot of discussion so far today about investing in the youth of Adams County, both students across the board. You know, this is kind of more of a long-term investment in the youth and the people of Adams County from from our perspective. The, what we're planning on doing is getting started immediately on the Riverdale Animal Shelter portion of the project. And are ready to start construction in the next couple of weeks on that portion. The goal there is to have that up and running by the end of the year. So that we can make sure that we realize the tax credits that are still available from the federal government. And make sure that the rest of this project will be eligible for those tax credits. We're super excited about being here and being able to present in front of you all. It's really heartening to see Adams County taking a. Putting a strong foot forward towards sustainability and investing in their buildings. Thank you.
This morning's request is to approve an agreement between Adams County and C M T A Inc. In the amount of two million, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars for the first phase of the Energy Performance Contracting Services.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from the board regarding this? Commissioner Odoratio?
I just wanna say thank you for your work on this. I think what we have here is a situation where. There are a lot of improvements that need to be made on these facilities anyway. And we could go through it through the traditional route through facilities, hire somebody and do it. In this case, we're having experts still do that work, but attached to it, the community and the taxpayers in the county gets the added benefit. Of a enforceable performance contract over time that will ensure that the promises made for energy. Savings will play out and I appreciate that. So it's kind of like we're getting both benefits combined into one. And so I will be supporting this and I'm happy to make a motion if that is ready.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Malika?
Motion in just a second. I just wanted to commend this work. I'm really excited about it. When I was on city council in the city of Norcklin, I approved the first net zero energy municipal building in the state. This isn't gonna take Adams County there yet, but we're on the right direction, so I support it.
Great, thank you. Others?
No, just support.
Yeah, okay.
Excited to vote on.
Just need a motion.
Yes, excited to support.
All right, Madam Chair, I move to approve the agreement with C M T A Inc. To provide solar install services at the Human Services Center and the Riverdale Animal Shelter. That specifically, I was reading their recommendation, the Resolution Approving an Agreement Between Adams County and C M T A Inc. In the amount of two million, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars for Energy Performance Contracting Service Agreement Two Zero Five Dot Six Four Zero.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Odoratio?
Yes.
Commissioner Malika?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes. So the motion passes five to zero. Congratulations on that and we're looking forward to that project. Next on our, item on our agenda is county attorney. So executive sessions. Heidi?
Good morning, Commissioners. I would ask, as time allows today, that we go into executive session pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute. Twenty-four, six, four oh two, four B and E, for the purpose of receiving legal advice and instructing negotiators regarding the estate of Anthony Chavez's case.
So moved.
Second, oh, go ahead, second.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Malika?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoratio? Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes. Okay, and that motion passes five to zero. So the time is eleven twenty-three. We're onto our land use cases. Staff need a little bit of time to set up. I'm seeing a thumbs up.
And I would also like a little bit of time for a break and a reset. We've been up here a couple hours, maybe fifteen, twenty minutes.
Yeah, that'd be great. Do you wanna do executive session today on this break?
Oh, if if attorney thinks that we could do that, would twenty, thirty minutes be sufficient for you?
Likely.
Okay.
Okay, so let's plan to get to come back at, time is eleven twenty-four. What do you think, eleven fifty-five is thirty minutes or shorter?
Thirty minutes would work for me. Do we think that's sufficient? She said that's sufficient. So I think thirty minutes sounds like a good number. So that puts us at noon. Maybe return at noon?
Noon is good. Okay, at this time, we are adjourned and we will reconvene as the land use case at twelve noon to hear Pecos, sixty-eight twenty, Pecos Street Rezone.
Afternoon. We'll reconvene our land use hearing at 12:06 and we will start with staff with RCU 2025-1.
Good morning, Commissioners or good afternoon. My name is David Wright and I'm a planner with the Community and Economic Development Department. And today I will be presenting on case number RCU 2025-1, 6820 Paco Street rezone, which is at the northeast corner of West 68th Avenue and North Paco Street. The request before you today is a zoning map amendment or a rezoning from residential 1C to commercial 2. This aerial view provides a general look about where we are situated in the county for this subject parcel. In southwestern Adams County, at the northeastern corner of West 68th Avenue and North Paco Street. It's just north of the midtown community and about three quarters of a mile south of US 36. The current zoning for this property is residential 1C, which is a single-family home district typically in the urban parts of Adams County. It's surrounded to the east by other residential 1C properties. A planning development, which is the midtown community to the south. A mix of different commercial districts as well as a commercial PUD just to the north and along Pacos. And then other R1C zone properties to the northwest and northeast. The future land use for this property is mixed use and I'll talk a little bit more about what that designation entails for the comprehensive plan. All of Paco Street in this area is either mixed use or designated as public lands or institutional. Just to the south, that residential high space is the midtown planning development. And then there are some neighborhoods in both residential low and residential median surrounding the space. When reviewing an application for rezoning, the criteria for approval are listed on the screen. So the four of them are that it must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Consistent with the purpose of the consistent with the purpose of the development standards and regulations, complying with the requirements of the development standards and regulations, and also must be harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area. To provide a little bit of application context and background for what you are looking at today. The applicant initially applied for a rezoning to commercial three, C three, rather than C two. C three is not a typical zone district for the future land use designation of mixed use. Again, I'll talk about that a little bit later in the presentation. The proposed use on the site is for a commercial retail center. This rezoning does not approve a site plan or a use. It is to rezone the property to commercial two. The neighborhood opposition to this development is strongly anchored on the thought that it could potentially be a gas station and that is not a part of the subject request that you are reviewing. This property is proximate to the midtown community as well as US thirty six, as mentioned previously. And then regarding previous applications on the property, there have been a few different conceptual reviews to explore what could be possible. And there was also a previously proposed rezoning denied for the same request from residential one C to commercial two in case number RCU two thousand eight dash five. And I might note that was prior to when the midtown community had been developed. That case was heard prior to the development of all the homes in the midtown community. Here are looking in four directions from that corner of Sixty Eighth and Pacos. So looking north, the subject property is on the right. It's currently bordered by a just a fence. It's a vacant lot. There are commercial properties that you can see up on the left of that photo. And then not shown, there is a single family home just to the north of this property. Looking east and west is along West Sixty Eighth Avenue and kind of the outer parts of the midtown community. And then looking south is down Paco Street into midtown. So we'll go over all of the criteria of approval for a rezoning. The first criteria is that the zoning map amendment is consistent with the Adams County Comprehensive Plan. Staff finds that this criteria is met. The page for the mixed use, future land use designation is shown on the slide where the typical zone districts are neighborhood commercial, so C zero, C one, and C two, as well as higher residential in R three and R four. And then two other zone districts that a property owner could apply for rezoning to, which is mixed use or transit oriented development. This land use category allows for the different mixes of higher residential and neighborhood commercial in the idea that a corridor might develop horizontally with a mix of uses. And also does allow for the vertical development of mixed uses on a single parcel. So again, the previous application initially applied for a rezon to commercial three, which would not be supported by the comprehensive plan. When looking at the mobility for this future land use designation, the collector and arterial roads are mentioned and this property is at the corner of a minor arterial, which is Paco Street and then a collector's street and West Sixty Eighth Avenue. It's along that Pacos corridor, which is a strategic corridor identified in the Adams County Comprehensive Plan, which I'll also talk about on the next slide. And this proposed commercial use does accompany an existing residential high use. So again, this corridor is one of the five strategic corridors listed in the Adams County Comprehensive Plan. One of the common corridor goals noted is to coordinate with property owners on the corridor to identify opportunities to rezone to mixed use or transit oriented development to align development with the future land use map. And staff acknowledges that this proposal is not to rezone to either of those two specific zone districts. But by doing so into one of the typical zone districts for the comprehensive plan for this designation would better align the current zoning with the future land use map. C two, so the commercial zone districts range from C zero to C five with C zero meant to be serving adjacent nearby neighborhood, commercial and residential spaces. Whereas C five typically would encompass serving the entire county. So kind of the least intense uses up into the most intense uses. Another note just about the C three designation versus C two is that the C three zone district allows for up to twenty five percent of accessory outdoor storage and the commercial two zone district does not. Going through another strategy in the comprehensive plan in the built environment and connections section. One of the strategies is to promote mixed use, multimodal pedestrian oriented development patterns in urban centers, town centers, around transit hubs and in mixed use zones. So this property has, there's a bus stop right on the eastern side of Pacos as well as the western side of Pacos. It's within three quarters of a mile of US thirty six. And it does tie into other commercial zone districts that are a little bit north of this property along that Pacos corridor in between West Sixty Eighth and US thirty six. Another common corridor goal listed in the comprehensive plan is to improve transitions between land use adjacencies through updated performance standards and to encourage and require more landscaping and better transitions between those residential high and commercial areas. The second criteria of approval listed on the screen is that the zoning map amendment is consistent with the purposes of the standards and regulations. Staff finds that this criteria is met. The purpose of the C two zone district is to provide retail shopping and personal services for those residing in nearby residential areas. A conceptual site plan is shown on the screen. So again, when approving a rezoning, a site plan is not approved. It's not, the applicant is not beholden to follow through with this, but this would be sort of an idea where there is a commercial retail center at that corner of Pacos and Sixty Eighth. Typical uses that are allowed in the commercial two zone district do focus on commercial retail, things like indoor recreation, food services, office, and automobile service stations, which are allowed in all commercial zone districts at this time. One note is that there was a question about whether or not a marijuana use might be allowed in this zone district and marijuana based businesses are only allowed in the C three zone district and above. The third criteria of approval listed on your screen is that the zoning map amendment will comply with the requirements of these standards and regulations. Staff finds that the answer to this is yes. The required lot size minimum for the C two zone district is none, so there isn't a required minimum lot size. The subject lot is just over one acre. The required minimum lot width for the C two zone district is seventy five feet. There's two frontages on this lot. The one along Pacos is roughly two hundred and fifty feet and the one along West Sixty Eighth is roughly a hundred and thirty five feet. And then the maximum floor area per commercial use is ten thousand square feet. And what has been showed is a potential proposal for this commercial retail center would also be ten thousand square feet. The last criteria of approval is that the zoning map amendment is compatible with the surrounding area, harmonious with the character of the neighborhood, not detrimental to the immediate area, not detrimental to the future development of the area, and not detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the inhabitants of the area and county. Staff finds this answer to be yes. So by rezoning, the property to commercial two would better align the current zoning to the future land use. It is a typical zone district permitted in the mixed use, future land use designation. It is adjacent to nearby residential high and along target mobility of roads. And the image on the screen shows the the Pacos corridor reflecting that the properties along that street are, have the future land use designation of either mixed use, public, or institutional. Staff wanted to provide a sort of roadmap for where applications and how they progress from an idea to approval. And I did not create this graphic, but another member of staff did. And typically, an applicant would come to a conceptual review meeting where a concept is presented and staff provides all potential comments that there could be on a potential use and gives them back to the applicant. The applicant then goes through a neighborhood meeting in preparation for submitting an application. They then submit the application with all the required documents. Staff processes that referral both through public notifications to neighbors and residents and as well as in email correspondence with different referral agencies. In preparing for public meetings, a public hearing notification is mailed, posted in the newspaper as well as posted by sign. Planning commission is the next step where this case is heard and the commission provides a recommendation of either approval or denial on the case, which is then forwarded to you, which is where we are today, Board of County Commissioners hearing. And after, if this case were to be approved or rezonings that are approved in general, the following applications may be required. So to establish a use, there would have to be a changing use permit, which is administrative and staff reviews making sure that all the performance standards of specified uses are met, things like landscaping and parking. If there's any variances that are required, they would happen at that time during the change in use process. Engineering applications are also required, whether that's a full review, grading or drainage plans as well as access permits. And the final step would be going to building permit. As part of the public notification process, three hundred and forty eight referrals were sent to property owners and occupants within seven hundred and fifty feet of this property. In receiving these, forty two individual comments were gathered by the county and by staff. And I also just want to note that in addition to those comments, there were two neighborhood petitions. One was included in your packet and another one was printed out and given to the county attorney. It came in after the
I present that's what she has.
Yeah.
Thank you, county attorney.
So in addition to these forty two responses, the two petitions, about fourteen residents also wrote updated letters and submitted updated letters. Two of them came in after the packet was posted, which is why they're also included in the second petition that you were just given. And of the forty two public comments that were initially received by staff, forty of the comments were in opposition with two in support. The opposition primarily focused on a concern about a potential gas station on the site, which also included distrust of the developer. Previous conceptual review applications that could reflect the idea that a gas station would be thought of and a lack of belief in a proposed deed restriction that the applicant has recorded on the property. Other concerns focus on environmental impacts and potential externalities of a gas station sighting near schools and residential areas. Some of the opposition also noted general concerns about commercial, just in general, not necessarily just a gas station, but all commercial potentials. And then two comments in support responded to wanting more retail and dining nearby this high density area in midtown. The referral agencies that were given notice of this, two of them responded with comments that both referred to the development of the property. So nothing that was of concern to the rezon, but that the Adams County Fire Rescue District provided information about the future development of the lot and future requirements. And RTD also provided comments on the future development of the site as it relates to their bus stop, which is immediately adjacent to this property. I just wanted to call attention to some more of the elements that were included in the public comment and submitted to the county. So neighborhood opposition against this rezoning was reflected in the email correspondence given in the packet. The petition, the initial petition included a hundred and seven responses against the potential of a gas station being located on this property. Two of those responses were not against commercial development in general, but rather focusing on a gas station. And the neighborhood also provided information about gas station sighting, referring to an EPA report, environmental research and independent reporting, which reflects to just two of the images that they included in their reports. The petition that was provided to you just this morning includes two hundred and twenty responses against the proposed rezoning. Planning Commission heard this case on Thursday, September twenty fifth. The questions for staff revolved around conceptual site plans and how they relate to a rezoning decision as well as how private self-imposed deed restrictions function for property development and the county's role in it. Public comment included nineteen community members that spoke against the rezoning, primarily against the possibility that a gas station could be located on the site. Testimony included a lack of trust in the developer as well as concerns over the validity of a self-imposed deed restriction. Other concerns touched on environmental, economic, and public safety. Not all comments that were received during this hearing were against commercial development in general, but the community provided clearly that they were against the possibility that a gas station could be on the site and looking to limit its development. The applicant acknowledged the difficult initial community meetings that took place at the neighborhood meeting and reiterated an intention to support commercial retail as well as a willingness to work with the community to include more assurances at that time. Planning Commission spoke to an interest in seeing the property developed commercially. Concerns about potentially limiting a gas station and how that might work. Also concerns about the relationship between the developer and the community. And ultimately recommended approval in a four to three vote. And in making that recommendation, the commissioners did note an expectation that the applicant would continue to work with the community. On October fourteenth, this case was scheduled to be heard by you, the Board of County Commissioners, and the applicant requested to continue the hearing to today to seek more time to better respond to Planning Commission feedback. At that hearing, the board voted by a vote of four to zero to continue the hearing to today. One member of the public spoke to concerns about the intention of the developer as well as concerns that the community involvement and feedback could be included in an updated deed restriction. And since that hearing, the applicant recorded the proposed deed restriction that was originally proposed and presented at the Planning Commission public hearing. So in summary, staff finds that a rezoning from R one C to C two is consistent with the comprehensive plan as well as harmonious and compatible to the surrounding area. And staff recommends approval of the rezoning RCU twenty twenty five dash one with four findings of fact and three recommended notes to the applicant. These are the findings of fact and the recommended notes. And I will read the third recommended note into the record. So that the applicant has self-imposed a private deed restriction that would prohibit a gas station from being developed on this property. Adams County cannot enforce any such private deed restriction and it would be considered a civil matter if any future property or future owner of the property attempted to pursue that use. And that concludes my presentation and I'm available for questions.
Alright, thank you for that. Colleagues, do we have any questions for the staff presentation at this time? Okay, Commissioner Henson.
Thank you. What is the business that's directly across the street to the west of this proposed parcel?
There are a, so there is a residential home just directly on the corner and then there's
Okay.
water ski dealer that's there as well as a mini storage plan unit development that is also across the street on the west side of Pacos.
Okay, thank you. And under C two zoning, what can you give, what is, what Are used by right, what, what's allowed under use by right, uh with that zoning, what type of businesses?
So I mentioned some of them in my presentation, which tends to be commercial retail and I'll, I'll go to the slide as well.
Sure, thank you.
Indoor recreation, food services, office, and then automobile service stations. Um, so it's, it's a broader uh neighborhood commercial zone district. That allows for a larger uh maximum floor area than both C zero and C one. Um, if there's any specific use that you might be curious about, you know, we're happy to, to, to double check versus the, the use chart. But i- in general, it's meant to be sort of a, a neighboring commercial district. Um, and automobile service stations are currently allowed in all commercial zone districts.
Okay, thank you, and then um back to the um. Findings of fact or that, I don't know, felt towards the, I think it was on the last slides. Can somebody please um from staff just discuss the um. No, the, the deed restriction that you mentioned, maybe it wasn't the findings, the recommended notes, yeah, thanks. Can somebody please talk about number three and explain? What, what it means if they're, if they have a deed restriction, you say the county has no, we can't, can, the county cannot enforce, and so. What if? How would that play out if they're, they're saying that they, they would prohibit a gas station in the deed, but that doesn't. Seem to be an enforceable uh restriction.
Sure, good afternoon, Sally Daggett from the county attorney's office and uh staff recommended. Is recommending this note, just to put everyone on notice that a private deed restriction isn't a county land use enforcement tool. And um so there shouldn't be an expectation that the county is going to step in and enforce that use restriction, because it doesn't have any authority to. Typically for a private deed restriction, you know, it's between the parties to the deed and there, in some instances, maybe a third party enforcer. Um, but i- in this instance, there isn't any such third party enforcer and. I don't think it would be, frankly, appropriate for the county to be, in this instance, it's not. A uh doesn't have any interest in the property itself, and I think it's a slippery slope to, for the county to start getting involved in enforcing private deed restrictions.
Thank you, and then when you, uh so it would be considered a civil matter, that means it would be um a neighbor. With a neighbor, probably somebody in the neighborhood would, if, if uh use was put there that they didn't like, that would be a civil matter, I mean, they would take, that would be.
There are currently two co-owners of the property and they have, the two owners have basically self-imposed this restriction.
Okay.
And indicated that the restriction runs with the land, so um. If the, you know, that use restriction is violated, you know, one of the two co-owners could enforce it. But there i- again is no provision for a third party enforcer, and that's part of why I think the neighbors are. Uncomfortable with the strength of this uh restriction. Um, but i- in a lot of deed restrictions, when there's, you know, a different grantor and grantee. Um, there might be included in the restriction, what's called a reversion clause. Which says that, let's say, um Heidi conveys property to me. And imposes a use restriction on my use of the property when I acquire the property. And if there is a reversion clause in that grant of property from Heidi to me, that means. Typically that if I use the property in violation of the use restriction, that the property might revert back to Heidi. Uh to become the new, the new owner, even the new and the old owner, in effect, that's what a reversion clause is. But again, because this is a self-imposed deed restriction, there is no such reversion provision, there is no third party enforcer. And so I think, again, that's why the neighborhood is not that comfortable that this uh self-imposed deed restriction has a lot of teeth to it.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that uh explanation.
Anything else, Commissioner Henson? Um, Commissioner Odricio.
Did you say that the, um, I kind of got that the, there was a request for this similar? Um, is it rezoned in two thousand uh eight, or when was it?
That's correct, two thousand and eight, there is a similar request for a rezone to commercial two that was denied at that time.
Okay, and, and you do say that a commercial two would allow gas stations as a use by right?
At the current moment, um automobile service stations are allowed in all commercial zone districts, um there. There is a conversation about potentially changing that in the development standards and regulations overhaul. Um, but at this moment, uh automobile fueling stations are, are currently permitted in all commercial zone districts.
Okay, and then what are the setbacks?
Just to clarify setbacks for automobile service stations or for. Um, commercial retail buildings.
Let's go with both, but let's start with the gas stations.
So automobile service stations have an entire performance standard uh page or, or chapter to, to follow. Um, pump setbacks, pump islands shall be located a minimum of fifty feet from residentially zoned or used property lines at a minimum of. Uh forty feet from exterior property lines, uh pump island canopies may project to within thirty feet of property lines. Island shall not interfere with any site distance triangles in accordance with these standards and regulations. Underground storage, tank, vent pipes must be located a minimum of fifty feet from residentially zoned or used property lines and a minimum of forty feet from other exterior property lines. And then um for the commercial two zone districts, uh there are twenty five foot setbacks for both front and side corner. Um, property lines, and then for the side setback, there um varied ones, but fifteen feet on one side. And five feet on the other side, um and then a fifteen foot uh rear, rear setback.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that's all for now.
Okay, I had a uh similar question, there are other land use um zoning models that um could have been more comprehensive and designed. The outcomes a little more clearly or articulate outcomes a little more clearly, was a PUD ever on the table? Um, to be a little more prescriptive about what could be used on this property?
Thanks for the question, I'm gonna re- uh defer actually to planning development manager Jen Rutter, because I was not the original case manager on this case. Um, and she can talk about previous conversations.
Sure, good morning, or good afternoon now, uh Commissioners, Jen Rutter, Planning Development Manager. Um, yes, I, there, I had had several conversations with the applicants before they applied and we talked through a number of different options. Um, to potentially restrict gas stations on this property. Planned Unit Developments are a customized zone district that uh would be a tool to do that. Uh, they, they, it is a more involved process than a straight rezoning application. Um, there's a preliminary plat and a final plat, um there's engineering plans, there's a site-specific development plan that's required. Uh along those lines too, so at the time, the applicant didn't have a vision for what to do with this property specifically. And so therefore, they were not comfortable pursuing the, the PUD option, just because it, it does require a lot more specificity. Um, than they were willing to move forward with at the time.
Alright, thank you so much, um seeing no further questions, we'll turn to the applicant presentation.
I, I actually have one, when you say that they didn't have a vision for the use, what do you mean by that?
You, you could probably talk to the applicant a little bit more about what they intend to, to do this, with this property, I think at the time, they had considered selling the property off and didn't. Didn't have a vision to develop the property themselves, um so it, it's, it's hard for, you know. Folks who just want to flip properties to, to do a PUD.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does that conclude your question?
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Alright, so invite the applicant down for a presentation or comments. Seems like you have a presentation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, uh my name is Mike McBride, I'm a land planner, I'm working with uh Joe and Kristoff over there, who are the landowners. And uh just helping them through this rezone process, so um. You know, just, just looking at the context of the site, you know, this is a one acre parcel, um like David mentioned, on the, the corner of Run Arterial and the Collector Street. Um, you know, C three zoning across the street, there's kind of a, there's kind of a, a string of commercial. Um, uses as you go north until you get to Greenbrier Pla- Plaza, which is a kind of a more intense junior box, um uh commercial development. And, you know, we think that's, it's just a real opportunity, you know, this is, it's kind of an up and coming neighborhood. Um, there's, there's kind of a lot of developers that want to plant their flag on a growing corridor here, and we think this is a, a great opportunity for them. Um, just, you know, just I got a few shots of the existing uh existing uh property right now. Greenfield Development, it does have a little, little wall around it, uh but you can see kind of the, the midtown uh development to the right, it's kind of this great urban, urban village architecture. Um, you know, it's kind, it's, it's built for walkability, it's built for, um, it's built for kind of neighborhood level transit, it's built for this, this uh Pecos corridor. That uh, that there's been a lot of focus on, and how do we make this a, a true like transit, transit oriented corridor? Um, that, that serves all the residents, that has a mix of uses along this, along this corridor. So this is looking uh north here on Pecos, again, you know, great, great architecture, great density in the midtown development. And um, and we want to feed off that, and we want, um, and there's, there's kind of a lot of commercial developers out there that. Um, see, see areas like this and, and want to be part of that neighborhood. So our conceptual site plan is kind of a, you know, it's kind of a yield study, it says, hey, we got this one acre parcel, we can hear the setbacks. Um, you know, there's always a parking two square foot ratio, how, you know, how much, how many square foot can you get on here? You know, how, based on the parking ratios of a, of a typical uh retail development. And so uh inline retail, kind of what this is showing, I mean, the market kind of says, hey, you want sixty five to seventy foot depth. Um, you need, you know, parking at, at uh, you know, three to five uh spaces per thousand square feet. Um, we need to self-contain all the detention, uh we want to be able to screen. Uh, the, the residential neighbors to the east and the north with landscape. So this is kind of a, this is kind of a proof of concept that says, hey, I think we can get, you know, our maximum building size here is ten thousand square feet, so we. We tried to maximize it and say, hey, can we get the parking required, can we get detention in there? And then even these, these dashed lines in the bot- in the, in the building there, those are, you know, think of those as kind of fifteen hundred square foot. Um, retail spaces with maybe some bigger, bigger uh spaces on the end cap, so maybe like a dentist or a restaurant. And so you think you can get uh, you know, uh five or six uh retail spaces in there, so um. You just think about a, a kind of a neighborhood commercial center around where you live, this is, that's kind of the prototype we're looking for here. Uh, one caveat is um to get, to get the geometry of the parking lot, to get the depth of that retail center or that retail space. We're looking for a little bit of a, the, the change of use permit would look for a little variance to that front setback. But I don't think that's a bad thing, I think, I think it provides kind of that architectural anchor on the corner of Sixty Eighth and Pecos. Um, it kind of matches the, how the architecture sits proud of the street, uh similar to how it does in Midtown. And gives you kind of great opportunities for signage, for patios. And um, and kind of makes it very visible along the street there, it's, it's kind of a flip on the old. Um, retail centers that you see a little north of here, where it's always parking lot, parking lot first, building in the back. And um you lose some of that uh kind of urban character for those. And, you know, we, we think our proposal, you know, aligns with the county plans, we think it aligns with uh the corridor plans. Um, like you heard uh staff say, you know, this, it's, it's supported, um C two zoning is, is supported for this future land use designation. Um. It, it creates this neighborhood-serving retail center, um consistent with the corridor goals with this, this north-south Pecos corridor. Connecting US thirty six and, and I seventy six. Um, it's ki- it's kind of a, it's a great corridor to kind of keep, keep building up, it's, you know, with the momentum that, that Midtown has created. And then it brings a, brings the site into alignment with the, with the Pa- Pecos corridor vision, I've got a few sites here. Um, of the Pecos story, Pecos corridor study that's ongoing, um we've tried to be a stakeholder in that group. And um just kind of showcase how our property can, can align with their vision. So this is a great graphic, I didn't put it together, this is from the Pecos corridor study, but it just shows kind of the mix of uses. Um, the great kind of north-south connection between the highways, um kind of the great opportunities that Adams County has there at I seventy six. You know, I'm assuming those, those purple areas, you know, turn to, turn to high-density mixed-use uh developments here in the future, once, once the industrial kind of peters out, so. Um, you know, this is, this is kind of this, this string of businesses along Pecos. That feeds, feeds all the neighborhood residential, uh creates this transit-oriented corridor, uh corridor. Um, that's uh, that's walkable and has multi, you know, multimodal transit along it. And so, yeah, I think, I think our, the context of our site works great with this, with the, with the corridor and uh the future land use designations. Um, you know, again, like you saw in the pictures, it's, it's a hard corner at two, at two, um, two major streets, you know, a, a arterial and a collector. Um, it aligns with the vision of this, this transit corridor. Um, you know, the, the county does, is trying to identify opportunities, opportunities to rezone properties. Along this corridor that align with the future land use map, I think this does exactly that, and it's, it's a, it's a walkable. Um, it's a walkable site, it has, it has bus routes along it. Um, it is, it is kind of a great spot for a neighborhood-scale commercial center. And only one acre, that's all you're gonna get, we're not gonna get a, we're not gonna big, get a big box, you know, we're gonna get. Um, a ten thousand square foot building or less with, with a few inline, inline tenants in it. Um, this is part of that Pecos corridor study too, so this is like the, this is the Route nineteen um bus alignment and use, kind of the size of the circle is the size of the uh. The amount of uh riders at that station, um but you could just see the strong north-south corridor connects the in, connects the interstates. Um, and we're sitting right there in, in the middle, on the, at the star right there, so. So just a little bit on why we did C two zoning, like uh David said, we did come in with C three. Um, we, I don't think we quite understood all the um, all the uses that were allowed in C three. Uh, specifically like the outdoor storage, um and the marijuana sales, so we uh, we kind of backed that down in our second seminal to the C two zoning. Because we thought it was more appropriate for what, um, what we're looking for. And then, you know, we did talk a lot with um, with staff and the neighbors about the mixed-use zoning. Uh, the mixed-use zoning is pretty prescriptive of, as far as like the amount of residential dwelling units that are required, again, this is a one acre parcel. Um, the mixed-use zoning wants ten to eleven to use per acre, um so it'd be ten units in this parcel, it's, it, it's be, it'd be a tough thing to. To uh, a tough yield to get on this property, so, and then, you know, we just think the C, the C two zoning allows. Um, the services that will benefit the neighborhood, you know, it's the dining, the shops, and the personal services. And I've got a few slides, you know, just on, on our commitment to, to no gas station, the, the owners will talk as well. Um, you know, we, we had a neighborhood meeting with the Midtown Group, um a lot of the concerns were centered on that gas station, and so. We came back to the county and said, hey, we came back to staff and said, hey, how do we prevent this use, how do we? Keep this use from happening on the property besides just us saying that'll happen, so um. We went, I got a next, the next slide on it, but um, you know, we did, we have recorded deed restriction, we brought an executed deed restriction to Planning Commission. And Planning Commission kind of said, well, if you're, if you're gonna put your money where your mouth is, why don't, why don't you have it recorded? And so we made sure we did that, um, we did look for a few modifications to that, which I'll go into, but um ultimately, we recorded the, the deed restriction. Um, as we presented it. So when we talked with staff about the kind of the mechanisms to restrict undesired uses. Um, we, we, we kind of looked through three options, one was to replat the property. And, and, and list restricted uses on the plat. But um the reaction we got was, that was kind of called spot zoning, and it was, wasn't a mechanism that was preferred. Um, preferred by staff, the, the second one was the PUD. Um, uh like Jen said, it, it requires a lot more engineering, kind of, you gotta know exactly what we're, you're doing. Um, I don't think we, we need flexibility to market this property to uh a bunch of different types of commercial users. So we weren't, weren't able to put together full site engineering drawings, and um that, that ultimately wouldn't work in the end, so. Um, so ultimately, what, what we chose was this uh, was this deed res- deed restriction. And it is part of the public record forever, it's part of the title forever in the title chain, um so. Um, so you can't get rid of it, you'll always see that on the, on the title. And, uh, so between our planning commission meeting and, uh, the board of county commissioners meeting today. Um, we did reach out, um, to the midtown metro district legal counsel, asked them if they would be a party to that deed restriction. Um, their legal counsel said, hey, no, this, it's not a power granted by Title thirty two, um, to metro districts. So they weren't willing to be a part of it. In our planning commission meeting, we heard from the city, the county attorney, um, that they couldn't participate because since it's a civil matter. Um, so we think it's, we think it's the strongest thing we can do, um, without kind of going to full engineering in, in a P U D. And I just want to point out, you know, this, this recorded deed restriction, it's essentially a poison pill that like runs with this land forever and you never get rid of it. Even if it's revoked at some point, it's still on the title chain. And title companies and lenders would not touch this thing with a ten foot pole. So I don't, you know, when you look for, uh, uh, loans for commercial real estate. These lenders are very thorough with their due diligence and very risk averse. So I, I don't know a single letter that would provide funding or a title company that would provide insurance for a property with the intended use that is on, that is on a deed restriction. Also, when you submit your change of use application, you have to submit the title commitment to the county. So let's say all the staff overturns here, that change of use application would include a title commitment that would have this in their title chain and the county would able, be able to refuse that application. So ultimately, we believe the deed restriction eliminates the, the concern, um, and we think it's a win-win. I think it gives us, um, economic, economic opportunity to, um, to develop this site. And it gives the neighbor certainty that, that we're committed to not, uh, developing a gas station here. So the bottom, bottom line is, it's not going anywhere. The deed restriction will stay, it's recorded, it's enforceable, it's permanent, it locks out a gas station. We are asking for C two zoning to allow, uh, commercial development on this site. But we are not asking for you to permit gas stations here. So a few shots of, you know, what a neighborhood retail center looks like, just so you can see what approximately ten thousand square foot building looks like. I know you guys see this all over town, you know, like I said, hopefully it's a dentist, haircutter spot, financial advisor, services, dining and shops. And so, you know, just to finish off why we're here. The owners are willing to, the landowners are willing to go through this to reduce entitlement risk for the property. And future com- commercial developers, they're not, they, they don't want to put their investment into a risky property that is not zoned correctly. We believe the highest and best use for this property is a, is a neighborhood commercial retail center. And, and it is because midtown's there, midtown is a fantastic neighborhood. And there's people that want to be around it, there's people that want to develop around it and feed off the energy that's in midtown. So retail does follow rooftops and we've got a ton of great rooftops in midtown. And we want to bring them services and, um, and neighborhood retail. Again, these, I got a few, uh, quotes from kind of our broker. Here they're saying, hey, we've talked to, we've talked to commercial developers, nobody's gonna spend at-risk money going after a project that, that hasn't been zoned correctly. And, um, and, and like I said at the beginning, commercial developers are looking to plant a flag in this corridor based on the, on the growing neighborhoods, um, the development in the corridor and just, and just the upward trajectory of the whole area. So really, it's, it's, it's the market is, is responding to the demographics of the area. The, the people wanting to develop a commercial center here are, are responding to the, the market and, and the value of this neighborhood in this corridor. That's all I got, thank you.
All right, thank you for that presentation, really thorough. Um, I'm gonna turn to my colleagues and see if we have questions from the board for this applicant. Oh, Gerald Rysio, let's start with you.
Yeah, um, you originally wanted to propose a gas station, right?
Correct, there, there's been a ton of interest for a gas station on this property.
That's not my question, you were originally proposing a gas.
Correct, we did.
And, and were pretty set on that, at what point did you abandon that, that intention?
After the neighborhood meeting, it became very apparent that a gas station could not be developed on this site. So then we came back to staff and said, hey, how do we, how do we move forward with this rezoning and prevent a gas station development?
And, and one of their recommendations was a P U D, why did you not stop at that moment and refollow as a P U D?
Because the P U D requires full site engineering and we don't have the ultimate end user and developer in place.
Okay, I, I think that, that's part of the challenge of doing a flip.
Yeah.
Is that you've got a neighborhood that is expecting as much predictability and consistency, um, and commitment as any future developer, investor or even lender. And I think that's where, that's put us in an awkward situation here, having to analyze this whole thing.
Yeah.
And, and, and so I think a P U D that would have been. And there's a lot more to be discussed here, but I think like based on what I'm seeing here, a P U D that would have customized, um, a plan for that neighborhood, uh, would have always been the right move. I know hindsight is twenty twenty, but I have a hard time overcoming that. But I appreciate you answering these questions. And, and, and especially, I, I do believe what I hear from you is a good faith effort to try to figure out how you can get that consistency, predictability and accountability, you know, on the property, but with a, a deed to yourself as much as it may be a. Based on what we understand is that a deed to yourself, while it may be a taint of some sort of title, it does not stop, uh, unless you actually gave that right to someone else to enforce. And so that's the challenge I'm also having with this particular, um, mechanism, uh, today. But that's, I, I just don't know how to overcome that, but I do appreciate you going through the motions of trying to figure out. Cause I think the plat might have been appropriate if it was beauty, right? But not as a zone, so I, I appreciate your efforts to try to address this. I'm, I, I just wanted to be open and honest with what I'm seeing so far and I'm still open and to hearing the rest of the testimony and information that we get today, so thank you, Mr. McRide.
Yeah, I think the struggle is, 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 is somebody's coming in and spending two hundred thousand dollars on design and engineering and getting to this space and still having the risk of not getting their project approved. So I think that's the, the bar we're trying to lower for, for, for them is saying, hey, you've got the zoning, come in and, come in and do, kind of do your project, so.
And I, I appreciate that, uh, but you've known from the very, very beginning that a gas station was not gonna be acceptable to the neighborhood at least.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Christopher Hansen? Okay, uh, so the way this works is we have staff presentation, ask questions, have an applicant presentation.
Are we hearing from the owner or is this the entire?
Oh, I apologize.
Is this the entire applicant, uh, presentation?
This is, I think, you know, can we hear from the?
Absolutely, it's your time.
The owners can come up and talk and?
Yeah, I sort of thought you.
Well, I do have, then I do have one question, which is, um, if the zoning were, if we did approve the zoning change today, is the applicant planning to sell this property?
I think they're trying to find a, a commercial developer that will come in and, and.
Are they open to selling this property if the zoning were to be changed today?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I, that, um, gave the impression, the thank you slide conclusion gave me the impression that you were concluded. Um, if you have more of your applicant's presentation, um, please come on up and continue. You're saying no thank you? Okay, um, so any more questions for the applicant?
No, I have some staff questions.
Um, let's go ahead, we'll have time, yeah, we'll have, we'll have time for staff questions later, so if you could just make note of those. Uh, we will begin with our public, uh, clerk, who has signed up first, um, from the public?
The first person is Anita Fitzgerald.
Okay, come on down, please introduce yourself, name and address, you'll have three minutes. And thank you so much for waiting, I know it's been a long day.
It was a long morning. My name's Anita Fitzgerald and I live at one seven two six west sixty sixth avenue, which is in mid, midtown. I am a resident there, I own a small business there. I am a retired teacher and I am also the survivor of an environmental cancer. So, um, this is very concerning to me. I am here to respectfully but strongly oppose the zoning change that would allow for the development of a gas station in my neighborhood. This changes poses serious environmental health and economic concerns for our community and should be rejected in the interest of the greater public need. A gas station in this location brings with it the risk of soil and water contamination, especially concerning over the proximity to a nearby water source. Even though there are modern mitigations for, um, fuel leaks and runoff, but the danger still exists. Beyond environmental risks, the introduction of a gas station would likely lead to increased traffic, noise and light pollution, as well as a decline in surrounding property values. These impacts would alter the character of our neighborhood and diminish the quality of life for those who call this area home. At a time when public trust in leadership matters more than ever, I urge you to stand up for the people of Adams County, for the families, homeowners and future generations who depend on responsible planning and environmental stewardship. This decision is not just about one parcel of land, it's about a precedent you set and the values that are upheld. Please vote to deny the proposed, proposed zoning change and protect our community from unnecessary environmental health and economic harm. We ask you to stand for the many, not for the few. And put the long-term health and well-being of Adams County residents first. Thank you for your time, service and commitment to our community.
Thanks Anita, great modeling, who's next?
Deborah Mendez.
Come on down, introduce yourself, follow Anita's example, name, address, you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, my name is Deborah Mendez Wilson, I live at sixty six sixty five Mariposa Court in the midtown neighborhood. A lot has been said about gas stations this afternoon and I came prepared to talk about gas stations. So if you don't mind, I would like to read through the comments that I prepared. We live a few blocks away from sixty eight twenty Pecos. I'm here today to oppose the rezoning of this property from a residential R one C zone to a commercial C two zone. Contrary to what has been said, the rezoning of sixty eight twenty Pecos to a C two zone would not align with the residential character of nearby neighborhoods in midtown, including midtown. A C two commercial zone at that precise location would diminish our quality of life and the value of our homes. And as we all know, a home is the biggest investment a family can make. Until recently, the developers here today have proposed the construction of a gas station at sixty eight twenty Pecos. Steps from homes where dozens of families live, many with small children. Their argument was, was that only a gas station would provide them with the highest return on their investment. Pecos does not need another gas station or a similar development in that precise location. And the current and long-term health and well-being of nearby residents should supersede the monetary interests of outside developers without a stake in our community. We all know the gas stations and similar commercial businesses bring more traffic, more noise, soil and water toxicity and other forms of pollution, along with increased crime risk. These are compelling reasons why they are partitioned from residential neighborhoods. Commercial development at sixty eight twenty Pecos would disrupt the safety and character of the nearby community and add environmental burdens without providing meaningful benefit. This rezoning was rejected in two thousand eight for the same reasons and those concerns are even more relevant today. I'm not reassured by promises a deed restriction would guarantee that the land would never be used to develop a gas station. We've heard repeatedly from the developers that they want to create a sense of space on this vacant land. I have never known a gas station to create a good sense of space in a neighborhood, the kind of place that gives a neighborhood a sense of well-being. Please, uh, invest in the future of our community, please choose to keep sixty eight twenty Pecos an R one C residential site that would lead to visionary neighborhood development, development that would add a true sense of place, beauty, utility and peace in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, clerk, who's next?
That was everyone signed up on the list.
Okay, I do see some additional folks in the audience, so this is how it'll work, uh, raise your hand, come on down, introduce yourself, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Natalie Gutierrez and I live at sixty eight twenty one Pecos Street. My lot is actually touching this lot, so my backyard is directly behind it. My daughter plays in the backyard every single day, so, um, you know, when they originally proposed the gas station, it was a lot for us to digest and obviously we don't want that. I want to be clear that at the planning committee meeting, they did admit, they have no intention of developing this retail center that they're showing you guys. We don't have any trust that that's gonna be actually built. I'm also a real estate broker and I could tell you I've done my research on deed restrictions and whoever imposes it could remove it. This is a big deal to us, we live here, we have a great community. Um, our children, you know, we're, we're trying to move Pecos, you know, from midtown down north. So it becomes a better space for everybody. If you guys vote yes today, you guys are moving towards moving Pecos more commercial from north, south. Which means more crime. And I think, I think we all know that, especially in our community, we know our community. We're a very tight knit group, we all know each other, um, and I, I, I really don't have trust in these investors. At the planning committee meeting, one of the planning committee members, she cried and that hit home for me because I really feel like she was about to vote no. And she didn't, and I understand, you know, she believes firmly that, you know, we should have a say in what happens with our land. And I also believe that as a real estate broker. But investors are a different story, you know, um, this land is worth more if it's zoned commercial, which means they could sell it for more, let's just be honest. And this may sound a little rude, but I don't care. These are homes, you know, this, this is gonna directly impact whether I have to sell my home, which I've owned for six years. And I love my home. Um, if there was a P U D or P D U, whatever it's called, um, and there was a decisive plan of what was gonna be built there, I think we'd be all for it, you know, and mixed use, there are plenty of things that can be built within mixed use as well. You know, there could be a retail center at the bottom with different office space, a salon. And then build some condos on top, I mean, we submitted a list of things that we'd be open to. We're not trying to be difficult here, we're just a community of families that are concerned about the future of this law. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Come on down, introduce yourself, you have three minutes, name and address.
Good afternoon, uh, and happy election day from one of your voting constituents.
Woo, thank you for voting.
Yeah, thank you, um, my name is Nick Thornburg, uh, I am a, I live at one five seven eight west sixty seventh place. Is located three homes south of sixty eight twenty Pecos Street. Um, I'm here today to speak in firm but respectful opposition to this rezoning. I want to introduce, uh, a little about my professional background that relates to some of my opinions that have informed my decision on this matter. I have a PhD in chemical engineering, for the last decade of my career, I have studied fuel properties and emissions management problems, uh, both as a researcher and as a professor. Uh, the latter affiliation is at the Colorado School of Mines, uh, which was, uh, recently ranked the number one national university in Colorado. I had a number of comments prepared, like many of my neighbors, uh, speaking in opposition to gas stations, we've heard a lot about that. I, I think that if I am a betting person, it's unlikely that these developers would proceed with developing a gas station on this property, just based on the resistance that they know that they would receive from us. But that does not deny the concerns that we still have with a broader C two zoning assignment. Commercial retail, uh, applica-, excuse me, commercial retail centers such as convenience stores. liquor stores, uh, a number of other businesses that could have, uh, open hours as late as midnight, would bring increased light pollution, noise pollution. Um, we're, uh, uh, certainly concerned about automobile traffic and turning vehicles, especially during school hours. Uh, there are a number of children that walk to school across this intersection. I walk across this intersection almost daily with my dog. There have been a number of instances already in this neighborhood of near misses of children, uh, in strollers, uh, people with animals and other pedestrians almost being struck by vehicles at this very intersection. We don't need to increase traffic, we certainly don't need to increase late-night activity at this intersection that poses a crime risk for the community. Um, some statistics that I wanted to cite about this, uh, from the FBI are that automobile service stations account for approximately four point, four point five percent of all violent crime in the United States, with robbery rates around thirteen eight point eight percent at these locations. And there are many homes under fifty feet away from this, uh, proximity to two different schools. Um, accepting this rezoning proposal further endangers this community and the safety and our well-being of our people. Um, there's also a potentially detrimental impact on property values in the surrounding residential area. As a homeowner, I'm deeply concerned about this, and a lot of research indicates that homes located within one-tenth of a mile from a gas station or other automobile service stations are on average priced a hundred thousand dollars less than homes that are not near such facilities. You're hurting your voting constituents if you approve this rezoning measure. And I want to remind you, on election day, we show up like we have today. So thank you very much, and we look forward to your decision and trust that you'll do the right thing for this community and its people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, come on down, introduce yourself, name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Taylor. My husband and I live at fifteen oh five West Sixtieth Avenue with our two, going on three young kids and a dog. We are across the street from this proposed development site, approximately two hundred feet away. So what happens to this land will directly impact our family as well as many others. The site at Sixtieth and Pecos is ripe for a commercial development. I'll be level-headed in that assessment, um, because although I look like a crazy pregnant lady and young mom, um, I did work for a large corporation in franchise development and expansion, so I see the allure of this land. However, given its location at the edge of a tightly knit residential area, walking proximity to two schools, which we walk to on a daily basis, and two early childhood centers, we believe that significant consideration should be given to what is developed here. I also will be fair in saying that I think there's an underlying issue that right now in Adams County, there can't be a commercial designation that does not permit a gas station. This is an issue that I hope the county attempts to resolve in the near future for the sake of both future business owners and residents. Um, jumping to why we still do not trust the developer, a couple of things I just want to point out, as it's already been stated too, but the recorded restriction of, of the deed was only done after a lot of urging from the planning commissioner at the September meeting. Um, and again, still have a lot of problem with there being a lack of a third party named in that deed restriction, and would love to understand a little more about whether or not the city is actually able to enforce the deed restriction like the developer has noted. Um, as Nick just pointed out, even if a gas station is truly restricted on the land, we still have problems with what's allowed in a C2 designation, including operating hours up till midnight and liquor, liquor sales. Um, lastly, what I will say is, we do not believe that this rezon request aligns with Adams County or its residents' goals. It has, it has the potential to perpetuate the crime and safety issues that we all witness to just a few blocks north on Pecos. This community is a tightly knit one, that you've probably have seen that today. Um, my grandparents tell me on a regular basis that the communities that existed back in their day don't exist today. And as a first-time homebuyer and young parent, I'm proud to say that this Midtown community and surrounding area disagrees with that. This is the kind of neighborhood where we swap beers, we swap baby clothes, we swap cups of sugar, we know all of our neighbors. This is a really strong place to live, and we'll continue to band together like we need to. But if this lot is rezoned to a, a C2, families like mine will not stick around. We cannot raise our kids near businesses that sell gas, alcohol, stay open late, or produce high traffic. It won't be a safe or desirable place to live. It will become a case study on how corporate greed continues to fracture local communities. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, we've got a couple of hands, uh, let's go with the, yeah, the lower down in the auditorium, we'll start there. Come on down, introduce yourself, name, address, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name's Jesse Gregory, I live at six-eight nine-one O-Sage, uh, catty corner to the proposed lot. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for the questions you guys asked, really appreciate it. The questions that you directed at the applicants, I thought were really poignant. Um, I just jumped up here because they just said everything I wanted to say, and that was amazing. I would like to point out, um, a lot of my direct neighbors couldn't be here today. Um, Mary Lou, she lives at the North Lot, she's been there since the sixties. Krista across the street, Daniel catty corner, another Dan across from us. Um, Lola and her family and the Dakens, um, you know, the brothers Aiden and Israel, Louise and Sandra. Uh, Albert and Natalie are here. On the corner, uh, Cam Lucky. I say that because I'm about to say "we," and that's who I'm talking about. We strongly oppose the rezoning of this lot to any level that can be a high-traffic, light pollution late at night, noise late at night, everything that they just said. I, I, I don't even think I have to say that, but I also just want to say thank you to predatory developers everywhere for allowing us to prove what we can do, um, because we've been doing this for a while now. And gas station, liquor store, another tire shop, any kind of thing, but more importantly, we were really happy when Midtown moved in and we saw the original, uh, mixed use drawn in, the original drawing. We, we were excited, and we are further excited to see future mixed use on that side of the street now. And C2 is absolutely now and into the future, five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, gas station, or that's, gas station is just our worst-case scenario right now, and I'm more afraid of things we haven't even imagined that could stomp out a community, and we are a community, as you can see. Um, we brought nineteen to the committee hearing, we brought out the door to the first two gas stations that we turned away. So, um, anyway, thanks for, uh, what I'm sure you're gonna do. I hope. Go.
Thank you. All right, come on down, introduce yourself, name and address, you'll have three minutes.
I hope my slow trip down does not go into my three minutes. I'm Joe Tomy, uh, my wife and dog, and I live at sixty-seven thirty Allen Drive in, in Midtown. I'm not gonna belabor the things that you've already heard, but I want to share something a little bit more philosophical, a little bit more personal to me. Um, my background, um, is of, uh, working in the criminal justice and public safety fields. Retired most recently as the Director of the Division of Criminal Justice for the State. Mr. Thornburg did a really good job of describing the issues related to these sorts of developments from a public safety perspective. It's not only what happens, but there's the perception of what might happen, and that's what hurts your, uh, community values amongst everything else. I know that when we've done work in the criminal justice area and juvenile justice area, we cannot sustain what we want to accomplish without listening to what the community wants. This is a multi-legged stool, and most of the voice in opposition to this, which is why I'm here today, is we need to take our time and make sure that the vision for this property looks right, looks, reflects the value of the people that come here. I can't tell you how many bait and switches, I'm gonna use that term very, um, liberally, we've seen, uh, this is, uh, my thirteenth year here, um, I'm an old geezer. Um, and, uh, the number of things we've heard, some of them pretty glamorous, pedestrian bridges, the original mixed-use concept, other things that were used to lure people into this community to make it the great neighborhood that it is, that have been changed on this, and this just feels like another one of those possibilities. Um, I disagree with the planning committee and the context that it meets the, the values. It might meet the zoning plan, but it doesn't meet the future vision and strategies that we would hope for in the community, where we think as community, we should be consulted in this. So that's my philosophical, uh, concern with this, and I'm gonna end with, um, what's, it's November fourth, I might as well end with a political statement, right?
Your time.
Jerry Ford, when asked, um, many decades ago, uh, being the President of the United States was the best job in the world, and he says, no, it wasn't. The best job in the world is being able to sit at a local board and help the community make the decisions that they want to make, to listen to those people directly. When you're president, you're calling legislators and say, do what I want. When you're a county commissioner, when you work on a little, a planning board, you have the opportunity to listen to what people need and respond to what they're asking for. That's what our community is asking for, and, um, on election day, maybe you'll be interested in, um, uh, kind of leaning into that vision, because that's one I definitely agree with. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, come on down, take turns, name, address, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, um, I'm Teresa Sines, and I live at sixteen fifty West Sixty-seventh Circle, which is just a few homes down from this property. Um, I wanted to start by saying we have a wonderful community at Midtown. We're very involved in our community, and, um, I work in our urban garden. We produce food not only for our community, but for the local food banks. Um, we've spent a lot of time improving our area of Adams County. We've put money in the form of extra taxes for a ten-year period to clean up the land that our homes and our urban garden are built on. So we really don't want to see something that will bring back those toxins and pollutions that we have already cleaned up. Um, we did submit a study that we paid for as an independent study regarding these toxins. Um, I urge you to consider a mixed-use zone that would align with our neighborhood goals. This would allow for residential with retail. Um, we've already got so many gas stations, another one is not going to add value to our neighborhood or to the Pecos corridor. Um, in fact, studies show that it would reduce values. Mostly, I'm personally worried about the crime associated if a gas station, a liquor store, or a convenience store would be put in. I'm very close to the property, and if that happened, I would most likely move out of Adams County. I'm also a business owner on Washington Street in Adams County. Um, I do believe we need to improve the whole area, um, to come up to quality standards versus just money and taxable properties. Um, like everyone has said, we have families and schoolchildren walking by this property daily to school. Um, we want something safe and non-toxic and non, uh, light polluting. Uh, please consider that other counties have regulations not allowing gas stations within three hundred feet of homes. So there are so many properties that are more suitable for a gas station or a convenience or liquor store than in the middle of our homes. Um, so let's consider something more in alignment with improving Adams County and our neighborhood. Lastly, please put yourself in our shoes. Would you want your children or grandchildren to have a gas station,
Ten seconds.
liquor store or convenience store plopped in the middle of your neighborhood? Please vote for us, you're Adams County residents and voters, not for someone who's only there to profit at our expense. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on down, I think you know the drill.
Hello, my name is Melissa Hockes. I am at sixty-seven seventy-four Navajo Street. Um, today's presentation once again failed to show the true surroundings of this plot. The true surroundings are homes much closer than what this picture shows here. Today's presentation also mentioned Midtown a great deal, but there are homes that are directly behind the yellow line of this plot that are right up to the property line. The, what the presentation did point out was that rezoning has been denied at least once before. If it was not found to comply with being harmonious to the community then, it certainly isn't harmonious now with more homes and families. Part of the presentation also mentioned the deed restriction as being the only option available. In reality, it was the only option that they were willing to consider. Another point from the presentation, retail follows rooftops. How much louder can we get as a community? We do not want the rezoning. There have been hundreds of comments against the rezoning of this property at all turns of this process. How many times do families have to take time off of work and take time away from their families to fight against what is clearly not beneficial or erroneous to this area? We don't want a gas station, a convenience store, a liquor store, a dispensary, or any other business that attracts crime and danger to our families and children. Earlier today, we celebrated the youth and the excellence that they show. So I'm asking that you don't take the same meeting to vote against something the community clearly does not want. A gentleman earlier said, today, said Adams County puts their money where their mouth is. While also earlier today, Adams County's money was with the children, and that's where I'm asking you to leave your vote no today to the rezoning of this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm trying to keep track. Is there anyone else in the audience? I think you all have spoken, but if I miss someone, this would be the moment where members of the audience, public can comment. Come on down.
My name is Amanda Meyer. I live at six-eight nine-one O-Sage Street. Um, I'm opposed to this, of course. Um, I also am concerned and would question why the, um, push for a rezon to C2, when I believe this turns into a mixed use in a year. So I just, if I'm wrong, please let me know. But also, I think there's just a few things that I want to point out on the map, because everyone has done an amazing job hitting all the points that we need to address. A big one for me and for everyone is safety. I think there is a high traffic, um, fire station just north of there that needs, that uses Pecos. It has to, it's constantly going up and down Pecos. There's already a ton of traffic at that location. We already are seeing traffic bumping out to our neighborhood roads to bypass just Pecos and endangering neighborhoods. Um, also, just directly west to the land that we are speaking of is a school zone. Pretty immediately, it turns into a school zone, because there's Trailside, which is also Midtown Montessori, and I believe there's another daycare scene, center just north of there. And families are from both sides. Um, the east side, as there is a neighborhood that keeps going east that they haven't shown. Um, and west side, they're going to that school, so they're traveling back and forth using that area. So, thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Okay, I do believe that's literally everyone, but if I'm wrong, come on down, introduce yourself, name and address, you have three minutes. Okay, all right, that concludes public comment. Um, at this point, um, we would have applicant response. You've had requested some time for that. You're welcome to do so, if you have a presentation for it, or just come down and, and make some comments. And then I'll bring it back to the board for any remaining questions or comments that we might have.
Hi, my name's Joe Hicks. I'm one of the owners and wanted to address a few things. We bought this property a few years ago and have been working with the staff, the county staff, and the neighbors. We followed the process that David put up there about how you go through the certain steps to get to this rezon. Um, regarding the mixed use, which I hear a lot of people talk about, staff confirmed we can't do a mixed use. With the lot constraints, it's a one-acre lot, and anything an acre or over requires at least ten or eleven residential units. We can't do a mixed use. If this was a five-acre lot, sure, that's possible. This site, because of the size, has constraints that prohibit a mixed-use zoning. If Adams County had any commercial zoning that prohibited a gas station, we would be all over it. There isn't one. So we went to the staff and said, how do we get this zone for commercial, something that's actually a feasible development, but prohibits a gas station? They said, you got a couple of options. One is a PUD. The PUD, as you may know, requires hundreds of thousands of dollars of studies of site plans, and eventually you are locked into whatever you get approved. Kristoff and I are not going to be doing the building. Kristoff and I are not going to be doing the building. We are open to partnering with a developer, but everyone we've spoken to that we would partner with says, first step is to get it rezoned. We're not going to spend two or three hundred thousand dollars on a residential zoning. Go get it rezoned, commercial, then we can talk. So that's why we're here. And the other option that the, that the county proposed was a deed restriction. Now, I've, I've heard from so many people and trust me, I, I'm impressed with the way these guys mobilize, the way they articulate. We know very clearly, they don't want a gas station, to the point that we don't want a gas station. I don't want that fight. I don't want to get sued. He doesn't want to get sued. So we said, all right, how did we accomplish this? And what we were told from the staff was, you do a deed restriction. So we offered a deed restriction to the county attorney. Can you be one of the grantors so that we know that in perpetuity, this thing is a deed restriction? There's no possibility of a gas station. And the county attorney said, we don't have a mechanism, we can't do that. Then we offered it to the district. Guys, we would love to include you in this. Your signature would be required if this were ever to be removed. They said, we can't do that. I would hope, and I believe that that shows enough good faith on our part, that we don't want a gas station. If there was a mechanism, again, a zoning that prohibited a gas station or a deed restriction that had somebody else sign on it, then we, we wouldn't have to discuss a gas station at all. We've tried to do the best that we could within the parameters to ensure that there will never be, and I'll say it one more time. I'll say it to you, I'll say it to you. We do not want a gas station. I don't even think one fits here, honestly, when you look at the setbacks for the pumps, the building, the parking and the storage tanks. We have moved past a gas station so far. And all we're asking is for a mechanism. We've, we've tried to provide the best mechanism we know how to say, there will never be a gas station on the site.
Hello, my name is Kristoff Atal. I'm the owner of the property. And um, this is our third step about trying to develop the property. The first one was a neighborhood meeting. We hear it loud and clear that they don't want a gas station. We took that into consideration. We addressed it. How do, how did we do that? We worked with staff. They look at all the criteria. They say, okay, a deed restriction seems to be the appropriate way to control that. We're like, okay. We went to the zoning uh, board meeting. We presented these. They say, okay, but somebody has to enforce it. We're like, well, I'm fine with that. I offer it to the district. We offer it to the county attorney. They say, we cannot do it. I'm willing to offer to anybody here in the audience who want to take that enforceable um, mechanism. We are fine with that. We, we, we just give somebody the veto on our own land. It's a big one. It's a big step we're willing to take. Now, as owners, we also have the constitutional right to be able to develop our property. And currently, zone residential, it's not possible. A lot of people mention traffic. Yes, it's too high of a traffic to attract anybody who would want to live there with their family. It's too crowded. It doesn't make any sense. So the current residential zoning does not allow this property to be developed. So we think we show a lot of good faith, a lot of flexibility. Uh, we don't want to go to, to offer to the public as a gas station. It would be a suicide for us to do that. Um, facing the neighborhoods again and those comments, we, we are not looking to do that. Uh, we want this property to be developed. We don't have the, um, the interest of developing it ourselves, but we want to make it possible for somebody else to do it and the first step is to have the rezoning approved. So um, there was a four-three vote at the zoning uh, hearing with the board. And they were very clear that we had to keep our word. That's really what they put us on notice to say, we're gonna approve it for you guys. You have to keep your word. What was this word? It's to do the deed restriction. We did it. And the second piece was to offer the enforceable piece to a third party. We did. So there is not really that much more that we haven't done and kept our word. Um, so, um, trying to address everything we heard. Um, a lot of times, people mention it's easy to remove a deed restriction. Well, I'm not too sure about that. Um, I've, I know several examples where, no, these deed restrictions are, are set to stone. It's impossible to remove. I mean, I wish in my personal um, uh, investment that I could, but it's, it's not possible. You can't do it. So it's here, it's strong, it's already recorded, so we gave out all rights already. It's part of public records. We attempt to work with the neighbors and give them their enforcement right and that didn't work either. So I think we ran out of options personally. And um, we'd like to have this um, property developed as quickly as possible with, we have interest from our broker, ranging from coffee shops to um, like what Mike mentioned, you know, it could be like a hair salon, it could be um, you know, a dentist, things like that. There's interest. There are people willing to, to take the development to the next stage, but they are not gonna do it if it's not first reason. It's one piece of the puzzle. So this is where we are today. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Um, colleagues, questions for the applicant?
Unfortunately, we're, we're stuck in this situation where you're being told that it's unenforceable for you to do a self-imposed deed restriction. Where's your lawyer in all this?
Our lawyer?
Yeah.
Our lawyer prepared the deed restriction and he said, it was the most robust way to get it done.
Interesting.
So, you mean not here today?
No, just generally speaking because I, I think that what we're hearing is that there's some general concern about the enforceability of this. And, and I understand that, that you're, and I appreciate your attempt and I do believe your attempt of good faith of trying to find some sort of way to address this issue. Unfortunately, at the beginning, it should have been a P U D. And at the very beginning, you were pushing a gas station with the community, very openly, and which I appreciate. But it feels like after that, um, with how much you were pushing that with the community, that the answer was that they just simply don't trust because it's been attempted a few times before. And this neighborhood specifically came out against this use and, and even when at the very beginning you were told, this is not gonna fly, you guys continued to persist on, in this area on pushing the gas station until finally at the end you realized, let's just try to salvage whatever we can out of this deal and do some without the gas station. The challenge here is that your good faith only goes as far as the moment you sell it and you've been very open and honest and I appreciate that about wanting your intention to flip this to someone else. And so as soon as that goes to someone else, there's no, there's no guarantee that that person or that new owner is going to have good faith. In fact, somebody who wants to squeeze a gas station into this location very well, might not have any sort of ownership. And I mean by that is, is, is connection to the community. And so I do think that there are some challenges here. I don't think that the zone, as it's written today in our regs, is a compatible uh, and harmonious with the community surrounding it. And it's unfortunate because this neighborhood specifically asked us years ago to remove gas stations as a use by right in some of these zones and we just didn't do it. We have a new board now and I really think that there's an opportunity while the hood is up, as we're looking through, making changes with our zoning and our development standards or uh, overhaul, that we might be able to address this issue. I, I wish also for your sake that these changes would have been made by now and that you could have initiated uh, something like this if you were insisting on not doing the P U D uh, at that time after we had made those changes. And I'm sorry that that's just a timing issue, but that's, that's the concern I have today. Um, and I gotta tell you like, um, yeah, I think you understand what I mean about the, the good faith only goes as far as the next cell of the property. And I, again, I appreciate your honesty with your intention to, to flip this.
Yeah, can I address that real quick, Steve? When, if and when we sell, that does not give the new owner the right to remove the deed restriction. You understand that, right?
So here's the deal. I think they can't hear you if you could speak into the mic.
Okay.
Um, you can also move closer or you could raise the podium. There we go. You got all kinds of options. Um, and so go ahead and Commissioner Odoricio.
Sure, sorry about that. So if we sell it to somebody else who sells it to somebody, whoever, anyone other than us, nobody else would ever have the right to remove that deed restriction. So I guess I, maybe I misunderstood what you said, but there, a deed restriction stays attached to the property regardless of who owns it. And a new person, a new entity, a new, a new owner cannot simply say, yeah, we don't want the deed restriction anymore. That's not a possibility. So I just wanted to make sure that's clear. What's that?
We, at this point, we can't take anything from the audience. So thank you so much for your feedback. Um, Commissioner Odoricio, what do you have?
No, respectfully, I'm not sure that we have the same understanding of the law, but I'm not gonna go into that.
Can I ask the county attorney?
They're not your attorney, they're ours.
Could I ask her, her opinion and she can tell you what she thinks? No?
Let's see what she says.
What I will tell you is that it would not be our role to give advice on transactions for private parties and that the county would never be able to enforce that deed restriction. That I can say for sure.
Alright.
So is anyone willing to put their name as one of the grantors so that we can ensure, we are so willing to do this? Just give, we're asking you to give us a mechanism that ensures that a gas station will never be built here. You tell us how to do it, we will do it. Period. So i- if you say, yeah, make me one of the grantors, done. We'll have that recorded by the end of the day or as soon as we can get your signature notarized. This is how willing we are to commit to no gas station. And I think if we overcome the gas station, there's a lot of support for a restaurant, a coffee shop, a dentist, the certain, the people we've talked to. If the only thing is the deed restriction.
I can also make a record on that. If your gas station is not the only concern I have under C two, uh, and I was looking it up. Uh, under C two, there are a lot of uses that this neighborhood has specifically asked to not have as many of. Gas stations, convenience stores and car washes. And in fact, we get a lot of concerns from folk. Those are all used by rights at this location. We are getting a lot of complaints over the years about these specific uses with the same neighborhood begging us to remove those as used by rights in these districts and zone districts. And I will tell you that we, again, we are in the process of doing the best we can. And I will tell you that this case will definitely be seen as a citation uh, to, to cite to or refer to for public input on, on how we handle commercial zones. Uh, so it's not only the gas station. Well, I appreciate that as being the number one concern that a lot of folks had. It, it, it is generally, I have concern about C two in this neighborhood as the neighborhood exists today and as uh, the um, zone is currently defined. And I, and so for me, I cannot support C two, but I wanted to clarify, yes, gas stations was the biggest thing. I think a lot of folks can look past some of this stuff, but I will tell you that it's not that alone because this neighborhood specifically has had concerns with convenience stores, car washes as being only even a couple of those examples that are used by rights in this location. The mechanism that you had just asked for on the podium just at, at the, right now, would have been the P U D. And it would have been a P U D customized to what the neighborhood was asking for and at the outset for five or six years, maybe not that long. I know that this neighborhood has specifically, proactively listened to the county when we said, can we try to get you to be Yimby's what you do want instead of Nibby's what you don't want? And their leadership under Jordan Rec in particular, went out there and proactively did a tire survey about what they do want. On our side, we were going through some transition with our neighborhood services, so we never really took that ball. And, and she offered multiple times to share that with us and our executives. And that might be something that we can take as we go through these processes now. Unfortunately, we just didn't have, the timing hasn't allowed us to take that as good input. But that's the model of what we're trying to do in these neighborhoods is say, tell us what you do want, so we don't have to play whack-a-mole on items that come up as proposed, having investors spend all this money to say, no, we don't want that, no, we don't want that, no, we don't want that. So I do have some empathy for what you're going through, but I can tell you now, like, there's just the timing doesn't make sense that it, it had this zone, we had a zone for you to choose, it would have been P U D. But your, it's your business model that stopped you from doing it, not the community's uh, situation. So those are some of the things that I can say that of why I don't believe it is harmonious or compatible with the um, with, with what we're dealing with today, with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for applicant?
Not questions, no.
Okay, thank you.
I, I don't have questions because um, Commissioner Odoricio covered uh, what I wanted to ask as well.
Thank you. We have more land use to do, so we probably have some questions for our staff and some commission discussion. Okay, um, so that brings it back to the board for commission discussion or any questions um, that you might still have for staff?
Yeah, I have a couple. So for the staff, what, 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 what's allowed in C one? How is C one different from C two? If we're talking about, I just want to preface my questions with, by saying, land, land use is always emotional. Chain, neighborhoods are constantly changing. Neighborhoods are either growing, they're, communities are in growth or they're in decline, but they're always in change. And especially when we're seeing change in older neighborhoods that also have newer developments such as the Midtown development. It's, it, there's, there are a lot of interests to weigh and so it's uh, and when, when, especially when you're talking about where is the community heading? What's the future land use? We're always looking to that. Um, so that's why I have some questions that I, from staff that I'd like to, to ask about this parcel or about our zoning, excuse me.
So to answer some, some of the primary differences between C one and C two, um, do not necessarily have to do with as much of the allowable uses, but maybe as the allowable um, times of operation as well as the maximum floor area. So the, the maximum floor area for a use in the C two zone district is quite a bit larger than that of the C one zone district.
I'm sorry, you said C one is larger?
The C two's, for the maximum floor area for a use in the commercial two zone district is considerably larger than that of
Thank you.
The maximum floor area in commercial one.
Okay.
Um, there are some slight differences in, in what is permitted. Uh, one of them being things like indoor recreation and like the arcade world um, could be permitted by right in commercial two versus needing a conditional use permit in uh, commercial one. In general, though, the, the uses in the use chart tend, tend to be relatively similar.
The uses tend to be, would that include um, some of the things cited by the neighbors, including liquor stores and gas stations and car washes and such?
Yes, and so, and liquor stores would probably be classified as uh, con- convenience stores.
A convenience store, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Uh, permitted in all C zone districts as well.
Okay, thank you. And then also for staff, has, do we have any environmental uh, memo or anything on um, gas stations uh, in prox- in that, in proximity to residential as is proposed on this subject parcel?
Staff was not prepared for a memo on gas stations today because the request is not for a gas station specifically.
Yeah, understood, yeah.
I am thinking that we did have a memo at one point um, several years ago, but it would be worth reaching out to environmental programs team to put one together is for the future and for when we're looking at our development standards and regulations uh, moving forward.
Okay, thank you. That's fine. Let's see, um, for, for the county attorney's office, is it true that lender, lenders and title company, in, in your experience, can you, can you speak to this statement? If you cannot, that's fine. That lenders and, and or, and or title companies would refuse to engage in business in lending or certifying the title if, if there's a deed restriction attached to a, a property?
I'm not quite sure I agree with that statement. Certainly, if there was a specific use restriction for her, you know, that where the deed, for the specific property that the bank is gonna lend money on, says there's gonna be no gas station and the borrower is saying, I'm proposing a gas station. I think, yeah, that's true. The lender won't lend money, but I can't broaden that statement further than that.
Right. And, but, and somebody could self-fund a development there if they didn't need to seek um, lending that, okay, then they could just, and then, and the deed restriction wouldn't necessarily apply. I mean, if they could self-fund the development, the deed restriction wouldn't actually impact their decision or wouldn't prohibit. Yeah, because there, there would be lack of enforcement involved in a situation like that. Okay. Thank you. So, those are my questions for right now. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Odoricio.
Uh, there was a statement made earlier that it's impossible to, to develop as it's currently zoned. That, that, that is a question I want to clarify on the record. It's an R one C right now. If these folks wanted to build a house, uh, R one C, they could do so today, correct?
That is correct.
There's no limit to the size of the house, but it would possibly limit the size of the squ- uh, the footprint as long as it's within the um, uh, with, within the setbacks?
We haven't specifically evaluated setbacks, but that is true. There are other performance standards about how much a building can take up on a specific lot. Um, and typically, R one C zone properties are considerably smaller than, than an acre. Um, but, but yes. It is currently developable for a single family home.
A- a- and so that, right now, they could develop today and then also have as a use by right an accessory dwelling unit.
As long as it would follow performance standards for the accessory dwelling unit.
That is the right way to answer that. Thank you very much. Good job. And then other options could be for a
And then other options could be for a rezone to something that would also have higher density um residential, maybe not full on R three or four, but uh there are other options as well, correct?
What would be permissible would be um by, or at least supported by the comprehensive plan would be R three or R four. Um, although I will say that in the R four district, the minimum lot size is two acres. So in this case, uh rezoning to R three would be the um, the next step that somebody could take for for residential.
R three, yeah, unless they were to seek some sort of exemption for R four, but that would be a different process, correct? Or is that just not possible?
And are you asking if it would require a variance from the minimum lot size to?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Odoricio?
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, I have one unanswered question uh with regard to the transition to mixed use in a year. And uh I'm just gonna ask for your help refreshing my recollection. It's been a long day. Um, with thirteen thirteen state law passing and this being a significant transit area, like, is this one of the areas that would be automatically upzoned or no? So if y'all could comment on this, it's gonna be mixed use in a year or no, it's not. Someone could comment on that. That'd be great.
Uh, sure. Chase Evans, Deputy Director of Community Economic Development. Um, I can't say that this does not fall within the T O C regulations. It is just outside of the boundary of the of the radius uh that will be required. Um, I can't speak and I'm not aware if David can as far as the mixed use in a year. I'm not sure where that's coming from.
Okay, it was probably, if I had to hazard a guess, it's probably the T O C, but it's just outside the the walk shed of the train station.
That's correct.
Okay. Alright, um, thank you for that. That's actually really helpful. Alright, those are all the questions that I see from the board unless there's something else. Is there any general board discussion or is someone uh prepared to make some kind of a motion?
Excuse me, Commissioner, if I may just add one more piece. Uh, just to Commissioner Odoricio's uh statements earlier, I did just want to remind the board, uh, next week on Friday, actually, we are holding our D S O workshop. And one of the main topics that we plan to go over is in fact allowed uses within our commercial districts in particular. Um, uh, gas stations and similar uses. So to your point about looking at this uh in relation to our D S O process, that is something we're anticipating and and actually will be doing next week.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Odoricio.
Alright, well, thank you for that PSA announcement. Um, I think that we can incorporate a few hours of testimony on this case into that record. Uh, as well as maybe the one on crematoriums and use by right in industrial as well as the uh uh, conditional using uh in commercial zone. So I would ask that you guys do that. Uh, with that said, I would be like, I would like to make a motion.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Odoricio would like to make a motion. Um, I know there is a motion slide prepared by staff. I don't know if it'll be relevant for you.
Um, I would move to deny the rezoning R C U two thousand twenty five dash one.
Second.
I think they're trying to pull up some uh alternative findings. Do you need anything from here or you just need the denial?
Let me amend that. I would recommend denial. I I'm actually asking for approval of a denial. Or a, let me make it more clear, a denial.
The the lawyers are getting nervous. Let Sally comment.
Sally, how would you like me to say this? Would you like for me to move for denial or approval of denial?
Yeah, you you don't need to adopt all four of those findings in order to uh deny this rezoning request. I think that some of these findings may still um, be met by the applicant, but you just, as long as there's one that isn't met by the applicant, that's the finding you need to make. It can be one or more of these.
What do you need him to say?
I got it.
You got it?
I recommend denial of the rezoning R C U two thousand twenty five dash based on uh, criteria number four, that the zoning amendment is not compatible with the surrounding area and not harmonious with the character of the neighborhood detriment. It is detrimental to the immediate area, detrimental to the future development of the area, detrimental to the health, safety and welfare inhabitants of the area and the county.
I will second.
Okay, so we have a motion. The second, we have to do voice votes today. Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter? Yes. Okay, that concludes uh this land use matter and I believe that concludes our day unless I'm missing something, county manager, county attorney? Alright, then we are adjourned.